All right, good morning, good evening, everybody. It's seven oh two P M. The town of Wellington, Connecticut, for the special meeting. And we will start with by following the meeting's order. You know, need for alternates to be seated nor approval of minutes. So the last president to speak, public participation is designed and encouraged. Speakers will be limited to time inappropriateness of comments, to make some progress, stay on topic, and maintain the form. We have anybody for president to speak.
Peter Tanaka, first like one twenty-five Mason Road. Uh, the the Board of Selectmen met last Monday and uh we voted to match the reduction percentage, the Board of Education, the two point seven seven percent. I misspoke. It was my error that I I read the wrong line. That would be a reduction in spending of a hundred and thirty thousand dollars. Instead of a hundred and ninety-six thousand dollars. I also believe that tonight we're going to be hearing from a lot of the public. And what I'd like you to do is listen to see who's safer than our ox being born. We're going to hear from people who have invested, whose investment in uh real estate has paid big dividends and they're not, they don't the with the rebalance when it costs them more taxes. Uh, we're going to hear from people that believe that we should have more savings. We're going to hear from people that believe we need more education. We're going to believe the people that would like to maintain town services at their current level. We're even going to hear from people that believe that we should be uh uh, meeting our unfunded state mandates. We're going to be hearing from all kinds of people tonight, people that that believe that any taxes are bad. So I thought what I'd like to do is keep in mind what you're going to be hearing tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Peter.
Next, Ellen Myrtle wrote Wellington. Um, so yes, going into tonight's meeting, we're we're going to hear, you know, the town, Board of Education, it's the end of the world, life is ending if we make drastic cuts, so they say. So just to set that up, as far as um getting into my prepared remarks, so on public officials, it's been noted at many of these meetings on public officials speaking for or against the budget. There's been some frustration expressed about politicians or representatives speaking out for or against a budget. Let me be clear, this is nothing new. Last year I had my own concerns when Republican Peter Tanaka publicly supported a budget increase uh by signing a letter that I felt was unreasonable. I disagreed, but he had every right to support it. I simply felt it was irresponsible. If a Democrat, Republican, or any elected official on the Board of Finance or Board of Selectmen um wants to speak for or against a budget, they should. That's why they were elected, to represent the people who voted them in. As a conservative Republican, I want the people I voted for to be vocal, especially if they believe the uh budget is irresponsible. Crime follow where someone's speaking out against a budget, they oppose is absurd. Other towns like Talon have their own uh parties campaigning openly on on social media. So both sides do it, it's part of the process, and we need to accept that. We knew this was coming. As a town, we saw this coming. During the meetings leading up to the first referendum, many residents voiced concerns about how this budget paired with the revaluation would drastically increase their property taxes. Some tried to discredit a pre-referendum poll and posted on a town page, but the results there were clear. Nearly nearly fifty percent of the respondents wanted three point five percent increase or lower. About eighty percent of the participants wanted four percent or less uh or less. Of those eighty percent, half of those wanted zero percent increase. So the failure of the first referendum, it wasn't a surprise. Fast forward to now, I ran another poll after post referendum. I got a fifty percent increase in participation, so seventy-six percent responded, much more than are here today. Um, eighteen percent wanted zero percent, thirty-one percent wanted zero to one point five, ten point five wanted one point six to three percent. That means roughly sixty percent wanted an increase of three percent or less. Only thirty-eight percent sport supported a four point six or more. This is what the community is telling you, keep the taxes under three percent. Now, some may say, well, that's just a Facebook poll, uh, Facebook people. Sure, but many of those people can't make it to the meetings tonight. They work, they have families, they're exhausted, their voices still matter. And this isn't uh, this was on a a page that's not Republican leading, it's very broad uh as far as different ideas. So let's not dismiss their voices just because they didn't show up physically tonight. Seventy-six people weighed in, compare that to how many people are in tonight's um room. Regional trends in budget referendum failures, we need to recognize what's happening in our town and those around us. Last year Wellington passed its budget only after going to a second referendum with shortening voting hours and pressure from of Board of Selectmen. This year we see multiple failures, Talon failed twice, Stafford twice, we've seen Killingley. The patterns play our education spending is a huge factor and it's growing out of control. State representatives, not just Tammy and Jeff, should be stepping up and acknowledging that's a statewide issue. This is a statewide issue. Financial reality of residents, let's talk numbers. The initiative referendum proposed a median tax increase of around a little over a thousand dollars per household. The median income uh in Connecticut is around forty-six thousand four hundred. And we just saw a three point eight percent increase year to year. So if we ran those numbers together, we're looking at forty-eight thousand one hundred and eighty dollars. That's a gain of about eighteen hundred dollars if somebody's going to see increase this year. So with that eighteen hundred dollars of new income, the town with the first referendum basically want to take sixty percent of that money. So basically sixty dollars of every hundred new dollars that were earned was just going to go to the town of Wellington. That's crazy. They didn't even think that. Uh, so where we stand now in a second referendum number is the Board of Education reduced, but still increased and still increasing, even though you'll hear that they decreased. Their increase in two hundred and seventy, approximately two seventy, two hundred and seventy thousand, the town is approximately. Uh, I may stand corrected if there's some numbers changing, but numbers I was working off was with a hundred and ninety-five thousand.
Hundred and sixty, right.
Okay, so I stand corrected with that. Approximately looking at a five point uh six percent net to be raised by a taxation. That's a six hundred dollars median tax income for the property homes is going to be six hundred dollars. So uh, when you look at, when you reframe that into eighteen hundred dollars of what people are going to gain in their income if using three point eight percent, that's about thirty-four dollars of every hundred dollars you gain in new income. Thirty-four dollars instead of sixty is going to go to the town of Wellington. Uh, in closing here, quick here. Um, yes, there are real challenges, zero increase in taxes nearly, it it is nearly impossible. I admit that. I'm trying to be realistic here, but we need to make fiscally responsible decisions. Regions nineteen, five percent increase blew a hole through our local budgeting process. That needs in itself to be revisited too. Uh, proposal, a reasonable path forward, in my opinion, let's aim for a two percent increase in taxes to be raised. This allows the budget to go up by three hundred and twenty-five thousand approximately, and um this would increase the tax home uh increase of two hundred and eighty-seven dollars. And with that, I did look at Wellington's median income, which it looks to be drastically under what Connecticut is. We're around thirty-nine thousand. So a lot of these numbers are actually be fifteen percent more than what they really, you know, those numbers I was saying. So if I'm saying thirty-five dollars for every hundred, it might be thirty-eight dollars um for every hundred dollars of new income that they're generating. But in closing, thirty-eight dollars out of every hundred new, just the town, I think, again, I've said it a couple times here, it blows my mind that you would just willingly give the town that. But that's all I have for now.
Thanks, Nick. Thanks, Nick. I have people up on Zoom, so I'll go through those. Uh, Jennifer McCoo.
Hi, it's Mike McCoo, Clover Springs Drive, Wellington. Um, I just wanted to make a couple of comments on uh again, sort of where we are in this journey to the budget. Um, I noticed that on the agenda tonight, there is nothing about setting the next referendum or setting that process forward. I don't know if that can be accomplished tonight. I think it should be. I think it should have been in the agenda, and if it can happen without it being on the agenda um appropriately, then I think that needs to happen. I don't see any benefit in us risking getting to the July one deadline as we work our way through this process. Um, we have information in hand, factual information from subject matter experts such as the Board of Ed has made cuts and offered um cuts in their request and has made an offer back of a revised budget. The selectmen are presenting a revised budget. Count on the expertise of those people, start putting those numbers into the spreadsheet, see where we're getting to. Um, and again, work with the people who have the sort of uh the professional grasp of the details. Hopefully we'll hear some really good information uh from the assessor on understanding the phased-in revaluation. I think it's an important conversation, although every bit of research I've done myself, I don't believe it's the right choice for us. I believe it pushes taxes onto other um types of property and other individuals that would not normally have that tax. It also artificially brings the mill rate back up again. But again, I'm not the subject matter expert. We need to hear from those experts tonight and um make decisions based on factual information. We're hearing already in this comments tonight, a whole salad worth of statistics. Again, it's very challenging even for experts in that world to get the statistics to all line up and be relevant. And um every single one of our houses is going to have a different result of this current situation. So I think we need to be careful to stay focused on where the facts are that we can make decisions on. And I think we need to get this budget process moving. And I think the budgets that have been revised and brought forward are a great starting point. And um I think well, I'm just going to leave it at that. I think we need to get the process moving and I'll leave it at that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Uh, Jim Bullock.
Hi, uh, Jim Bullock, Laurel Drive. Uh, also former selectman of the town of Wellington and former chair of the Wellington Board of Finance. Um, again, I've I've argued at many meetings that uh inflation's running between three, three and a half percent where we see it right now. Um, I like to see spending adjusted, so our effective tax rate is somewhere in the three to three and a half percent. Uh, I'm not sure where that would that would be, but uh I I agree that a careful and thoughtful analysis uh is uh what needs to happen. So that overall impact is minimized to to the taxpayers of Wellington. Thank you.
Yeah, uh, Laurie Shumpert.
Hi, Laurie Shumpert, two seventy-one Turnpike Road. Um, we know that we heard from the voters, they did not want a seven point four percent increase, but we can't assume that they don't, that they want to reduce services and cut staff by reducing to a zero percent increase. We've heard from people last week who said that, and I don't think that's uh responsible or accurate. Um, anybody can do a survey. I surveyed the members of my household and we both support um going forward with the budget. Um, those on the Board of Selectmen and Board of Finance who want a zero percent increase and plan to sabotage the budget are not working in good faith. Um, it's irresponsible to hope the referendum fails so that your very delayed timetable will force the town to revert to the current year's budget. That's not serving the town, that's sabotage. What do you hope gets reduced? Snow plowing, senior services, schools, social services, tax collector, land use? It's also irresponsible to accept a plan put forward by a member of the public without consulting the town's legal advisors. Let's hear from the experts. But of course, we've kind of um you know, pushed things off to a point where that's going to be really difficult to do. It's time to get serious about a budget that serves the town while keeping the tax burden reasonable. If we can get below a five percent increase, I think that that would be acceptable to the town and it would allow us to keep our services. Thank you.
Good work. And then we have Zoom two at Wellington C T dot org.
Hi, sorry, it's John T. Hen. I logged in through um uh, I logged into Zoom dot U S the other day for my uh Wise Committee meeting, and it won't let me change my name now. Uh, John T. Hen, uh, twenty-six Eldridge Mills Road. Uh, I just wanted to comment tonight about the plan by um Ralph Tullis to try and phase in the revell. Um, we don't know the knock-on effects of what that will do to other calculations in town. Uh, we don't have a legal opinion uh as to whether or not we can even do it. Um, I, at this point, I would say it's far too late uh to try to implement something like that in time for our next fiscal year. Um, if that's something that people are interested in pursuing, uh, the next time, next time we uh do a revell, uh, by all means, uh, bring it forth a year before the revell so that we have time to assess it properly. Uh, right now, we've only got a couple of weeks left, uh, and we, I don't think that it can be assessed properly at all. Uh, and uh, at this point, I think it's a waste of time. Thank you.
Thanks, John. Thanks, John. All right, uh, Caps. Caps. Okay, anybody in the room?
Matt. Yeah, Matthew Clark, uh, forty-two Blair Lane Road. I'm currently selectman. And I'm also currently the uh chairman of the Economic Development Commission and we're supporting the Board of Finance. Um, we have a stagnant tax base in our town, um, so our costs are increasing. But our revenues are not increasing in the long run. That's a, that's a large problem as well. Um, the revaluation this year means that residents are going to see a five to ten percent increase um in their taxes on top of whatever is decided for spending increases. Um, and that that'll be approved referendum based on what what inspires here and is approved by the Board of Finance. Um, so what the proportionally, what this means is that residents are going to be paying a little more proportionally, and commercial is going to be paying a little less proportionally. Um, and that's why, that's why the residential one is going up. Um, you know, our neighbors in town are in a similar situation as we are. We're not unique. Nothing, you know, it's not like we're some kind of unique place that that ran things incorrectly. We're in, we're in this situation alongside many other Connecticut towns, and Talon, I guess, they just refused a two percent tax increase this week. Um, so um, the capital projects um savings plan currently calls for about one point four million dollars to be reserved for future school spending, uh, future school buildings and fire station needs. Uh, that is a very large amount. Um, as has been stated earlier, for people, Wellington, you know, refused the seven point four percent increase, and I don't think that they're going to approve a five percent increase either. I could be wrong. I've seen a lot of people. I've talked to a lot of people. I get calls, I call, um, I don't think it'll pass. But um, we all agree that Wellington should be saving money for future building needs, for fire stations, and for future school needs. Um, everyone agrees. It's just a matter of luck, that's all. Um, we just can't agree or we just disagree on the level of funding. The reserve for capital projects is dramatically over the past three years. And we simply can't, um, afford to reserve another one point four million dollars this year. Or Finance should accept the reduced funding um request from Board of Education um and decrease the capital projects reserved this year to somewhere in the four and fifty to seven fifty thousand dollar range. Um, that level of funding equates to a tax increase of of around somewhere between zero and ten and two percent. Um, boosted on a prepared detailed worksheet laying out the different budget increase percentages. And even all things equally divided, or any other changes to the to align items, what that will mean for um capital projects contribution this year. Thank you.
Thank you, Matt. Anybody else? Yes.
I am brush on eleven Bridge middle lane. Um, I would encourage you to accept the Board of Education reduction, and hopefully the town could meet that same number so that perhaps our whole budget could come in around two point five, two point seven five, somewhere around in there. And on the education side, as soon as there are any workouts where we are affecting things that directly um touch our children, and I don't think we want to do that. Uh, we've taken away everything we can that does not affect the children directly, so I hope that we can have your support for that. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Mitch? Oh. Mitch, go on. Okay.
Um, just a couple of things. Uh, I was at the select meeting. Oh, sorry. Mitch, save a uh, Atlantic Road, Wellington. Um, you know, I've I've heard that we've decreased the budgets, right? The selectmen represent that they decreased the budgets two percent. It's still an increase. Uh, Board of Education has decreased their budget. They've decreased their increase. Um, and I think if I was just walking in the room, I'd be thinking, oh, what's there to be upset about? We've decreased the budget two percent. Um, I think, you know, I hear also a lot about talking, listening to experts, right? Last time I lived, I learned, we, you know, we live in a representative republic. You guys represent us. We vote for you. Our voters have spoken on this last budget referendum. You guys are supposed to work for us. Uh, the voters are the experts that we're supposed to be listening to. And if somebody may mention that the other towns, it's not just Wellington. The voters all over are giving a message that they're representatives. Um, I think there are plenty of non-essential services that we can look at. I don't know what those are, but I think there's a lot of non-essential services for cuts to be made. I am proposing and suggesting that we owe zero percent same volume we had last year, let the dust settle. Um, I think that uh hang on a second, lost my place here. Um, you know, when we talk about the schools, I I love when people say it's for the children. I made this point at the last meeting. Everybody that says for the children, they're talking about structure, the buildings, they're talking about teachers' pay. Again, we have failing schools that are under educating our children. Fifty percent are failing the standards. Um, we've got a nine to one student ratio. I did account from looking at their website. Center School has about three students for every employee in that building. Um, so you can't tell me as a as an immature adult that's held jobs, that's worked in business, that worked in lots of different areas, that there aren't places to cut. And I think I said at the last meeting, cost of living, I don't remember the last time I got a cost of living increase at my job. Yeah, the town expects one every single year. I don't think that's I don't think that's a responsible representation of the citizens that you're representing. You reserve anything.
Lauren.
Hi, Lauren Lawler, forty-eight River Road. The budget process this year has been anything but fair to the taxpayers of Wellington. There are members of the Board of Finance who would not consider serious reductions to the budget that have been brought before them. These same members are stalling the reconciliation process, knowing the impact placed upon taxpayers of the reevaluation of the properties. The voting at the annual town meeting was chaotic with roughly thirty citizens present. The moderator and the town clerk had to take repeated counts of show of hands in the room. The C I P required three votes. On the second vote, it was tied and up, and the motion was denied. Then another C I P member walked into the building and a third vote was called passing by one vote. I ask the next town meeting like this, ideas required and a paper ballot has given to each eligible voter. This will restore the integrity of the process and anonymity in regard to how one votes. As far as reconciling the budget goes, the B O F should work together as close to a zero budget as is possible. This is fair and equitable to the taxpayers of our community. Many who are looking at tax increases of ten percent greater under the rejected budget, a budget that failed two to one. The voters have sent a clear message. Please open your eyes and ears, respect what the majority of constituents have voted for. Please make the required reductions to the budget. Thank you.
Thank you. We still have Caps up.
I just, I I just lowered it.
Thank you. Anybody else in the room? Uh, what?
Um, Michelle. Every year that we do not pass a budget that meets the cost of inflation digs us a deeper hole. For years, we haven't invested enough in our capital improvement plan. We haven't followed the capital improvement plan. And we have that. We have some aging infrastructure, all having problems all at the same time. The reason we have a capital improvement plan is so that it can pace it out over time, and we can do this investment in a way that's really smart. But if you pass a budget that is too low, we're already in the hole and you're digging us deeper. I ask that you please consider the long-term impact of your decisions tonight. Because every year you make it harder and harder for us to get out of this hole, and when it comes time that we have to build a building or replace a building or modify a building, the cost will be so horrific, we won't be able to do it. So if you want to maintain a town that has schools, that has firehouse, then we have to be smart about it and plan ahead. The capital improvement plan allows us to plan ahead, and you should be following that plan and investing money to do so. And cuts to the capital improvement plan hurt all of us in the long run and cost us more in taxes, more in financing costs when we have to bond it. Why do you want to pay more in interest if you don't have to? You could put a little in the bank now. So be smart about how you use your money. Don't be reactive and just respond to people's desire for no taxes. Nobody wants to pay taxes. I don't even want to pay taxes, except I do want my schools to provide services to the kids. I don't want them to have any worse education because we're cutting the budget further. And I think that the budget that we've seen presented um on the piece of paper for the Board of Ed shows the cuts that can be made without harming student learning. And to go further than that would also have a negative effect on all of us and on our home prices, because potential home buyers look at the school results and the school budgets. That's all.
Thanks, Michelle. Peter.
Good evening. Peter Lutinich, ninety-seven Trash Road. I served formerly on Board of Finance, Planning and Zoning, C I P, and Board of Education. We live in a time of great change. Medical technology, information technology, our global economy is all changing the way we live our lives. As the other gentleman just stated, thankfully, what hasn't changed is our representative democracy. And you folks, as he pointed out, represent us. And the taxpayers rightly recognized that we cannot afford a revall increase in taxation and spending increases and a major expansion of savings for capital projects and rejected this budget. I urge you to listen to taxpayers. They are not ignorant. They are not irresponsible. We are the legislative body, and we're telling you that because we have a revaluation, we need to hold all other spending flat. And that is why we need a zero increase in spending. Thank you. Good night.
Donna Cook, seventy-seven Common Road. You know, one of the things that I heard um some people say is that they are very frustrated that because of the cost to the town to do another, another vote. So with that in mind, I encourage the next opportunity to vote to be on the best options we have. As low as you can go um where it makes sense. Um, because it's going to continue to cost money if people look at it and say, you know, for this, or they don't think it's a wise use of their money. I don't care if it's my dollar or your dollar. It's a waste of money. It's a waste of money. Um, and sometimes we have to go for the things that we want because of necessities. Um, I question when we look at the schools, I am sure that there are some real needs. But the other thing is, we live in a world where we don't necessarily, we maybe we have to increase class sizes. You know, that could be an option. Um, I went to school where there's twenty-five kids in a room. I think everybody I graduated with or moved to the next level with could read. And we've got awful test scores, so there's definitely something that has to happen to help the kids out. I don't know what the answer is. Um, but I do know it's a problem, and we do have a large percentage of our population that is living at a poverty level. And so some of these increases, or or they're close, you know, there's food insecurity levels and things like that. So it's not a nice meat bone you can wrap around everything. So I just encourage um all the boards to look really hard to see what they can cut out um and what their their necessities are so that the next budget can be passed.
Thank you. So Mitch, yeah, just one first thing. I, the percentage rate is fourteen percent poverty rate in Wellington right now. After a tax increase, you can only imagine that that will go up. Um, the uh, also I hear about like service to the kids and again, I go back to our, we have the failing schools that we're looking at to give a raise to. Um, I understand contractual obligations, but I understand contractual obligations, but that's where they need to be. Uh, you know, with. And, and cuts don't mean worse education. You know, like somebody said that last week. Uh, well, if we spend, we're spending twenty-eight thousand, roughly twenty-eight thousand five hundred per student in Wellington, which is. Uh substantially more than any other town around. And we have lower scores than any other town around. So I guess if we spend fifty-six thousand, we might be able to increase their scores. If we, if we double the education budget, I guess, is a point somebody made. You can't do better with less. When you have less, you improvise. You learn to do things differently. The other thing that I've heard a lot at the, at the selectance meeting, I've heard it, and. I don't know if I've heard it in this meeting, but it's the word can't, right? The selectance meeting I heard repeatedly, we can't cut this, we can't do this, we won't do this. Which is pretty shocking as taxpayer and somebody, you know, given the vote that we just had, two-thirds majority voting this down. Here are our elected representatives saying, I don't care what the voters said, we're not doing that. Not how we're supposed to work. So please bear that in mind when you're making your calculations.
Um, I just asked that you only allow one comment from each of us tonight. We're going to be here until one in the morning. You let each of us go multiple times. I have a lot I can say, a lot I would review. I will hold back. In the honor of fairness that we all have a chance to speak, but I ask that you hold us. To one three-minute time period, not one stone one all night.
Your hand is up.
Yeah, just real quick to speak on, on the point as far as more money equals a better education. As three kids are homeschooled, my per. Per kid cost is drastically under whatever twenty-four, twenty-five thousand dollars per kid. And my kids will outperform the standards set in public school. So more money does not mean better education. Thank you.
Alright, so up on the screen. Kams raised their hand again. Yeah, Kams.
Um, my name is Deborah Kemp. Um, ninety-three Village Hill Road. I am a retired elementary teacher from an inner city. I have, I have been the teacher with twenty-five to thirty-five. Second graders, kindergarteners, third graders, first graders, preschoolers in front of me. From various economic backgrounds, from many, many challenging needs. Uh, from many challenging behaviors and various social situations. I've worked there for twenty-four years. I now, for the past eight years, have had the privilege and honor. Of being a substitute teacher for both. Center and Hall Elementary School, I mean Hall Middle School, sorry. Um. During this time, I have been both. Taught in all the grades from pre-K to eighth grade. I have also been the music teachers, the gym teachers, the band teacher, the art teachers, the health teacher, the Spanish teacher. Social studies, special education, all the special education and librarian. And I am able to speak from firsthand knowledge that the staff from both of these schools are dedicated. Hardworking and extremely knowledgeable. And they are working so hard in every grade and in their field. Yes. State testing can be important. However, there are other assessments that take place to measure progress. They. I'm not privy to all of the scores, but I have been a witness to the continuous growth. Through my observations. Through emotional, academic and social growth. I have seen a child. Who arrived at this country at the beginning of the year who could not speak any English. And is now able to hold conversations with me. I have had the privilege and honor to identify a student. Who could not, excuse me, who could not identify their letter sounds, their letter names, and who's now speaking on grade level. I have witnessed a child who could not voice their needs. Or able to communicate in any form and now. Is able to do that with their peers and with the staff. If any more money is cut from the schools, it will be detrimental, yes, to our children. Because not all children are white. From a safe environment who have the economic needs. Some, a lot of these kids. Breakfast and lunch, that's it. They do not sleep in a nice warm bed. They don't have family to support them. We, my husband and I were lucky enough to foster a child that was my student in second grade. We got him out from the inner city. And we were able to raise him at the town of Wellington. He is now not in a gang. He is not dead. He is not dealing drugs. He is now living. With his family in the Boston area. Finally, he is, and, excuse me, he is a graduate of Wyndham Tech. None of these things would have been possible if he continued to live in the city that I taught. And the city that he grew up. Every child learns differently. Every child deserves the same opportunity. As the ones that are privileged enough. To live in certain areas of this town. Thank you.
Thank you. Alina Testa.
Uh, yes, Alina Testa, eleven Meadow Lane, Wellington. I. I would like. To make a statement. Uh. About the, there were, there were many, many people talking about today or previous days, previous meetings. That the. Uh, test results of the state assessments are not important. The, the, the state assessment. The scores of the test. Is really the only indication. Of how good the school performs. And the fact that our schools have. The lowest probably ever scores. Obviously. It does not perform in according with the money which we spent for those um. For whatever we spent in school budget. I graduated from Russian school. In my school, of course, Russia, you could say many things about it. And uh. My, I also have family in Ukraine, so I'm not Russian, what you think about. But um. I had forty-five. Children. Who studied together with me through all the years in my school. And the majority of everyone who graduated my school. Are top-level world professionals, not world professional with the highest results, forty-five. It doesn't matter how much money you put and believe, believe me, it was not the school of abundance. We had nothing. But we had a desire to study. We had strict rules. We had to study. So something is wrong with our school system that spending this amount of money. We have such a drastically low results in education. Which is the main purpose why our children even attend school to get the education. In safe environment, that's it. Why do we put so many other factors in it? My children. They never went to school. They were homeschooled. We spent. We did spend a lot of money, but not uh as school spends, but for all different. Additional. Additional educational um moments. But not the regular school curriculums education. And my children are. Extremely educated and our youngest son now got accepted to the highest level universities in our country. Being homeschooled. So the amount of money which we spent is literally, I think, too much and wastefully spent. Although I have a very high respect towards everyone who works there, I know. Teachers who work there. They open their heart in fullness towards the kids and that's wonderful. But the system, something is wrong. We finance something wrong. So I personally would suggest the school budget to be reconsidered. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Alina. Jennifer McCoo.
Hi, Mike McCoo again, Clover Springs. Um, we're sharing a computer. I just wanted to clarify a comment from earlier. Uh, Mitch Sabo made a good point um about what I said, and I just want to be a little clearer. I was not implying that we shouldn't be listening to the voice of the people. Quite the contrary, the voice of the people is the only voice that matters. Um, my point was when we start talking about statistics and Facebook polls. And people telling us what cost of living raises they've had in the last couple of years. That's all. Subject to different opinions and viewpoints. And it doesn't even have to be truthful. He and I both have worked at the same agency for a lot of our adult lives. Our salaries are public information. You can look them up and see that he and I both have done well over the years. Um, and so my point is. When it comes to making decisions, the professionals who are bound to do a certain job. Have a different role to play than those of us in the audience. We can make our point and we can argue for the thing we believe to be right. And we are the voters, we are the townspeople, we should be listened to. But when we actually need to make a decision based on numbers or facts, we have to count on the professionals who we are paying to provide us with those facts. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Peter, uh, just Pete Tanaka of one twenty-five Mason wrote, just a. A couple of clarifications. Mitch, I, I. If, if you've cut by two point seven seven as a cut, I, I believe that I clearly stated there was an increase of two point seven seven. And, and when you challenged us to meet the same cuts, we had already made the same cuts. Alright? Uh, and then just to point out that. Already baked into this next referendum, already baked in is, is the decrease in, in revenues. And the increase of two hundred and twenty-four thousand, seven hundred and seventy-three dollars to region nineteen. About twelve hundred dollar increase per student to region nineteen, but that's baked in already. Thank you. Okay, anybody else in the room? No, okay. This time I have about a half dozen letters here. People have to be read at the beginning, so read them. This one's from Kathy Demerz. Dear Chairman Lawler and Board of Finance members, unfortunately, I don't think I'll be able to attend the BOF meeting on May twenty-second. Please share my comments below at the meeting. I hope the BOF will not cut the budget too severely. It's important to find a balance between compassion for those who ate lower or fixed incomes and they need to adequately fund. Basic services that our towns and maintain our aging buildings. Whatever final budget. Numbers, the BOF decides to move forward to town meeting, I believe it will be important that they represent themselves as unified afterwards. Even if the vote is not unanimous. Otherwise, it will undermine voter confidence and respect for the board's function. I believe it's also important for the BOF to describe in report form how they got to those device numbers. The voters better understand. What cuts were made and how this will affect town's earnings this year as well in the future. Particularly planned capital expenses. You should also explain in narrative form how revenue shortfalls are impacting the town budget. Posting only budget spreadsheets prior to the referendum is not a complete way to communicate the voters. Adding a narrative report will help to better inform them before the budget referendum. The town of Ashburton's BOF included a narrative with their budget spreadsheets for the recent town meeting. Perhaps it can be considered as a model for Wellington. I've attached a copy and it can also be found on their BOF's town webpage. Thanks for your consideration. Happy to merge forty-eight Mason Road in Wellington. Next one, Richard Maloney. Proposed two thousand twenty-two twenty-six budget process exploring cuts to essential services like education and public safety. Despite a thorough review of expenses and revenue. No plan to increase revenue. The town relies heavily on property taxes, which are already generating significant revenue. However, there is no clear strategy to boost income from other sources. Yet essential services face potential cuts. Yeah, local improvement program, CIP savings plan. The CIP committee requests one million four hundred and ninety thousand dollars for a shock absorber. Savings funds split between eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars per school construction and six hundred and forty thousand dollars for a firehouse. This is excessive because there are no defined projects or specific budgets for these funds, just general tax increase deposited to a savings account for future use. Tax increases, residential property taxes are rising by ten percent this year due to a property revaluation. The proposed budget adds another tag, increases on top of revaluation, requiring an additional one million two hundred and four thousand. Six hundred and forty-one dollars in revenue. The Board of Education offered a hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars in savings. Producing the extra revenues needed to one million thirty-nine thousand, six hundred and forty-one dollars. Proposed solution. To avoid cuts to essential services and ease the tax burden, the CIP savings plan should be reduced by one million. Thirty-nine thousand, six hundred and forty-one dollars, leaving four hundred and fifty thousand, three hundred and fifty-nine dollars for savings. The savings could be equally, could be split equally, two hundred and twenty-five thousand, one hundred and seventy-nine dollars and fifty cents for the firehouse. And two thousand, two hundred and twenty-five thousand, one hundred and seventy-nine dollars and fifty cents per school for renovations. This approach maintains savings for future projects without impacting essential services or adding to the tax burden during the revaluation year. Why isn't the CIP. Shock absorber the first thing to cut? Why this matters? The budget process is frustrating because despite careful financial planning, essential services are at risk without clear justification. For the CIP's large savings request. Homeowners are already facing. Higher taxes due to revaluation and additional increase feels unfair, the specific plans for the funds. Thank you, Richard Maloney, six Marco Road, Wellington, Connecticut. Next. Deb Benkowsky. Here, Mr. Stevens, I'm ready to share my strong and heartfelt support and that of my family for the proposed school budget as well as the previously. Proposed, but this referendum is not just about numbers, it's about priorities. It's about whether we as a community. Believe in providing our children with the education resources and opportunities they deserve. Unfortunately, past budgets. Have been defeated by a significant margin, often influenced by our town's elderly population. And those without children voting now. I deeply respect the generations who have built this community, many of whom. No longer have children in the school system and those who have decided for their own reasons or whom are not fortunate enough to have their own children. However, they fail to recognize the profound and lasting consequences of their no votes, which hinder our children's potential. The community's long-term progress. I urge them all and all voters to consider this. Strong schools don't just benefit students and families, they benefit everyone. Well-funded schools enhance property values, attract with families. And create a thriving, connected town when we fail to fund education properly. We aren't just shortchanging students. We are limiting the entire community's growth and long-term success. Our teachers are working harder than ever, often without the tools, compensation or financial support they need. Our students are being asked to make do, to settle for the bare minimum rather than being given the chance to reach their full potential. All because a select few feel that it. Rethought somehow, or they just can't justify the tax increase. That is not the kind of town I would live in, and I believe many of my neighbors feel the same. We cannot allow individual financial hesitation to limit an entire generation's. Opportunity to learn, thrive and pursue their dreams. This is our chance to change the way we've always done things, to stop choosing just enough and start choosing what's right. I ensure the budget represents the top one necessary investment in teacher salaries, classroom resources. And the programs that shape competent, capable young adults. We need to keep the budget healthy. Fully funded and right for the next generation so that. We'll be here long after many of these current voters are not. Respectfully, that Benkowsky parent resident, Richard Vogel. Next. Good morning, Bruce and Brianna. I hope this note finds you both doing well. I'm sorry that I can't attend the budget meeting this evening. But I did want to voice my concerns about the funding for the Wellington School Community. I know hard decisions always need to be made and that there are no easy solutions, but I don't want to see an additional cut to the school system. Class sizes are already large. This teaching staff is fantastic and those schools need funding increases. Flat budget while every line item they pay for increases results in a large cut to the system. I know you know this, but I'm hoping money can be found somewhere else. Thanks for reading. Best, Brian. Good afternoon. I couldn't agree more with the proposed cuts to the budget and we need to strive for a zero percent increase. Town, state and federal tax increases are outpacing wage increases across the board. In addition, we have a declining enrollment at the schools in town year after year. Why do we increase the budget year after year to teach less kids? Since we moved to Wellington, our property taxes have increased substantially in the yearly increases. Over the last five years are unsustainable for middle-class families. Please continue working to save Wellington residents from burdensome tax increases, especially in a revow year. Appreciate your support in town. Thank you. Jeff Newcomb. Appreciate your support in town. Thank you. Jeff Newcomb. And I need a breather, so I zoomed. Melissa M. McKinnon.
Hi, thank you. Um, Melissa McKinnon, sixty-three Lucian Road. I'm speaking tonight not just as a parent, but as a longtime volunteer and resident of the town of Wellington. Someone who truly cares about the future of our community. I want to urge everyone to support this year's budget. This budget isn't just about numbers, it's about the heart of our community, our children, our seniors, our roads, our public safety. And our quality of life. It's about making sure our schools have the resources they need. It's about keeping our senior center active and welcoming. It's about ensuring that when a family calls nine one one, help is there and fast. I also want to say that I absolutely agree with what Mrs. Kemp said earlier. She spoke from experience and truth. As someone who is in classrooms regularly, she sees firsthand what goes on. What our teachers face, what our students need. And how hard our staff work every single day. Her voice is grounded in reality. And it's exactly the kind of perspective we should be listening to. There's been a lot of inaccurate claims being shared. For example, people saying that our schools are failing, that there are only nine students per class and that. There are three staff members for every child. None of that is true. Our schools are not failing. Our teachers, staff and administrators are working incredibly hard. Every single day, often with fewer resources than they truly need. Class sizes vary and staff roles range from classroom teachers to special education providers. To get cafeteria workers, custodians and administrative staff. Every single one of them plays an important role in keeping our schools running. Tossing around misleading numbers only confuses the conversation and hurts the work we're all trying to do together. No one wants to see taxes go up. But just like prices at the grocery store, the cost of running a town rise too. If you want well-maintained roads, strong schools, public safety and a vibrant senior center, we have to be willing to invest in them. So I'm asking everyone here, please don't make your decisions based on Facebook comments. Or fear. Ask questions, look at the real numbers and think about the kind of town you want Wellington to be. Not just today, but five, ten, twenty years from now. Let's lead with the facts, let's lead with care. For our community and let's support this budget for all of us. Thank you.
Thanks, Melissa. One last letter. Dear Board of Finance, I would like to respectfully write to you concerning the decision to cut more from the education budget than has already been proposed. As a school nurse from Hall Memorial, I am very concerned for the well-being of our school. If more funding is to be cut from the budget. I have been at Hall Memorial for eighteen years and have seen the different challenges faced over the years. One of the biggest challenges, as we all know. The COVID pandemic. We do know that as a society, this created isolation, depression, fear and anxiety over what the future would bring. Mirages, families and children were affected. I believe a general mindset has also been affected. Since that time, we have seen a dramatic rise in anxiety, depression, self-harm, just to name a few, as well as a general apathy where in some cases. Non-compliance to attendance policy, rules, expectations and respect towards others. This does not describe everyone, of course, but we have seen a dramatic rise in many situations that have to be dealt with. The job of school personnel in many cases has been daunting to keep students engaged, learning or even in the classroom. Due to emotional issues has put added pressure and stress onto staff. Who so badly just want to share their enthusiasm and joy for learning or let share lighthearted activities of sports, art, health, et cetera. Make the students world more well-rounded and ultimately the life they are fulfilling and happy. Some of these challenges that are very, very real have caused time, a lot of time from different staff. To be able to manage, deescalate or resolve issues. That come about due to this new reality. It was at least five years ago now. I had a teacher admit to me she was not, she was only not worried about two of the students in her class. This is not a phenomenon of just Wellington, but all over Connecticut and our country. All we have to do is look at the newest report that has come out of the federal government about the health of our children that has stated the dramatic increase of children with autism. Anxiety, depression, suicide, deviation. As well as being treated with stimulants, psychotropic or other medications to manage chronic diseases. The percentages are staggering increases in many cases. In the nurses' office, they have seen a dramatic rise in mental health. Issues which can then affect physical health as well as rises in diagnoses of autism. Autism spectrum disorders as well as ADHD. This has the new challenges of how to manage some very difficult psycho-social behaviors on top of the medical issue at hand. One may have to spend some time in the school to truly experience what these challenges look like. That being said, I see the other dedication. Positivity, determination and perseverance to give our students in Wellington the best that we can possibly give. This includes all staff, administration, nurses, parents, custodians, secretaries. Kitchen staff and of course teachers, we love and care about them so very much. So to sum up what I am trying to say is this, I cannot imagine that given. Bit of such daunting challenges in the world, and yes, right here in Wellington, if the Board of Finance is going to cut the funding further. That aid the school staff to be able to carry out the very important mission of educating our children. To do more with even less. We are dedicated, but we are also human. Please be mindful of what these cuts would mean in a practical sense. I know you don't want a system. That may not flourish if the load is too heavy. Once again, I respectfully ask you to consider all of this. Sincerely, Marcia Canciara, all middle school nurses. Okay, up on Zoom, Adam Zalonis.
Um, Adams Loness, one nineteen River Road, um, just wanted to speak to the Board of Finance, um. Regarding, we had seen previously the, uh. Almost eight percent of it was increase in taxes. Obviously was not, uh, tenable from the, uh. Residents here, however, um, we also cannot operate in, uh, in deficit underneath the, uh. Uh, inflationary costs. It's just, you know, gas, heating costs, buildings, fixed costs are up. We just can't operate in a. Um, in deficit. So somewhere in between, we need to find a balance and, um. You know, that, that has to be looked at different parts of the budget. I know the Board of Finance has reviewed the, uh, school budget. And they presented that. Um, I do have concerns about additional cuts to the school budget. I have three children in the school and, uh, in center school. And, um, I know people say the school is failing. I can't speak to anyone else's children, but. My, my children all have excellent test scores at the very top. Um, so, and I've. Been very, very pleased with the, uh, the work that the school staff has done. Um, you know, please be mindful, um, that impacts that you do make to the school budget will affect. The quality of education that our children receive. Thank you.
Thank you, Adam. Anybody else in the room with comments? No, at this time then we'll move on to new business, uh, discussion of the phase in of the reval. Ashley Montez and Kara Fishman are here to speak to us regarding that. They're not on the agenda.
Oh, they got sent out. Well, that's okay. We can skip that this.
Ashley, Kara.
This is Ashley Montez.
I am Ashley Montez, I'm the pre-press lecturer.
And, um. Basically a phase in, there are attempt to do it. Um, it's, you're just, in my opinion, my analysis, you're kind of shuffling. Stuff around. Um, and, uh, the first year. What's going to happen if you've ever the phase in is taxes will be less than they would be. Normally, but there still will be, and I use that's the initial. Amount to be raised, um, in the analysis. So that's what it's, uh, the old one seventeen, one five seventy six. Um, and, um. Determine it out what the mill rate would be. So if you phase in your assessment increase, then only the properties with increases. Are allowed to case in. If there was a decrease or zero, there's no place in for that, um. Person entering. And, um. Um, so you're raising the money. Instead of raising it all in year one, they're kind of raising it over four years. There's still going to be a shift, um. You know, whatever, the taxes are going to go up. It's just a matter of. You get hit by all of it in. In the first year and I, in analysis of, I know I'm not, I know I'm not a taxpayer in town, but. Um. You know, when, when you face properties, uh, the assessments in, of course, the mill rate goes up. Um, because you still have to raise the same amount of burden. So, um. Um, in the first, um. Uh, two years or so, well, this year and then. Yeah, for, for next year, there would be a cap, the productive mill rate would be above the cap for motor vehicles. Um, and then after that, the motor vehicle. Rates would be much lower because the pound mill rate is real. Um, as, as an aside, you know, I haven't done the analysis, but I've done the, I did the valuation and. Most people are going to get a, uh, motor vehicle tax bill that is much less than they have previously. Um, because they changed the way that value, it's no longer market value. Based on a percentage of MSLP. Period. No adjustments for anything, et cetera. But if you take an MSRP of an older vehicle, you get a very small amount, right? So I think, um. There will be some balance to the increase in real estate from the motor vehicles. And, um. So I didn't want to say that. There is also, um, an option. I was, I was really trying to figure out how to put all these spreadsheet stuff in. It's not very. Um, easy, but I can. I think I can tell you what the effects are essentially. The commercial, uh, properties that would see, um, much lower increases. In their taxes, um, are going to get. You know, assessed higher, they're going to be carrying more of the burden, um, in the first, uh, year or two. Um, I don't know what their reaction is going to be. I just want to put that out there. I don't think that's really a. Good growth strategy to, um, shift it onto commercial, but, um, that is what happens. Right, um. And, um. That's really, you know, uh, every, that's really about it. The other, the other option is there is what they passed up last year. Uh, the legislature. There's what I'm calling the homestead exemption, but it's, I think they call it. Something else, but. Uh, essentially what you can do at a. As a town is reduce the assessment of, of the primary residence residences, uh, in town for people that live in. Uh, two family or smaller homes. Um, you can do it anywhere from five to twenty-five percent. And you could do it for one year, two year, three year, whatever. Um. You can do that in the first year and you're still going to have the shift onto the commercial. Um, but, um, you know, it, it won't be as bad. I, yeah, in the first, in the first year for the residences. Whether or not you continue that after the first year would be a board decision, which we could. I, you know, certainly, um. Soap out as to what the impacts would be on taxes, but, um. I, um, I think that the. The impact.
I have a question. Do we have enough staff to administer something like this?
Yes. I mean, this has taken a lot of time to be honest, I'm doing that.
We have the people necessary to administer this year over year with it.
Well, okay, so I mean, it's, I believe it's something that can be administered. Other towns are doing it and. Um, it's, it's an option. Um, it would just be. You know, having, taking the whole amount and just phasing it in every time. And I think you can. You can, um. There's a. Program, uh, the tax bill and program has, um, a function in there, um, something that they will do. Speak with Q D S about it. Um, our tax software vendor and it's something that they do, okay? The flip side of that is, or the other side of that is. That it's going to cause a lot of confusion for four years, as people are going to be calling. Why is my assessment going up? And, and then we think of, um. Yeah, so that's going to be for four years, um. Uh, sort of a hassle factor for both of our offices. Um. And then the fifth year, you have another reval, right? So, uh, whatever's going to happen there. Um, but that is an option. The homestead, um. If you were to do that, um, the first year where I took Thai in the low end. Um. In the first year, the thirty-five percent. The mill rate, uh, is three, three thirty-four, one, one, two. And with a five percent, um, eventually it would be twenty-seven, twenty-six, four. Um. So. Uh, what I think that helps. People that are kind of shocked by the increase, they have planned for it for the past year. Um, this kind of gives them two years to ease into it. Um, but there's that. Um. And, uh, that, that's pretty much, I mean, I'm happy to answer questions, but.
So with the homestead exemption, does each taxpayer apply for that?
Yeah, they have to, they have to apply, um, just because. You know, we don't know where people are living, we need to be analysis based on mailing addresses and property addresses and. If they coincide or if there are, so, you know. Assuming we're living here, but, um. You know, that would have been something, yeah, that they'd apply for.
So would the benefits be roughly the same as doing the basin?
Um, when you say benefits, you, you're talking about like the change in the taxes?
Yes.
Oh, you don't have, okay, I have it. That just. The, uh, um, yes, I do have it. Okay, so, and first of all, on the phase in. Um. If there was no increase. If, you know, if there was no basin. Um, and with that proposed no rate that was projected, but that's what I, they were using, um. You have the bulk of the, um, people are, that fourteen hundred sub-year properties. Are paying between a, a one and a thousand dollar increase. Right, and the five hundred and two that are paying one to two thousand. And then it's, you know, smaller, much smaller numbers as you go off. That, so what you do in the first year of basin is now you are shifting, um. More people into that one to one thousand, from the one thousand to two thousand range. Um, and, uh, that, that higher range for both the five hundred and two properties to one hundred and fifty-three. That's the main, um. So that's just kind of gives you an indication of. Uh. You know, what the, what the effects are for that. Um. The homestead. See, I may not have that same analysis for homestead, but I can.
Yeah, she probably doesn't have it with her, but I definitely seen that there was a slight change if you did apply for the homestead. Um, and again, you would have to apply because there's, there's many, many people, um, but everyone. But it is a slight change in the numbers with the basin.
I'm just curious, um, since this town has never done it. What is the quality of the software? Is it? Like extremely reliable? Because I'm sure other towns use the same software. And I'm curious if we know how reliable it is from maybe talking to another town.
Okay, so reliability. And I learned this, unfortunately, my personal, uh, the safe for the mistakes. You know, you have to, when you go from one program to the next, you have to check that the numbers match. That's essentially it. And there is a process that I have a folder, it's done every time. And, um, that's how that works. Um, as far as, I mean, you could have somebody, a third party check it or, or whatever, though. Um, there's also, we haven't, uh, it hasn't been done yet, but there's also a way. That changes in the assessment database can be matched with what she, what the collector gets, you know, as far as changes. That changes in the assessment database can be matched with what she, what the collector gets, you know, as far as changes. And this reconciled and every month before the wheel, however.
And Q D S is a very reliable, um, software. We pay a lot for it as well. So it's just something that we do depend on. They're very, very experted also on their end. Um, so they're very knowledgeable in walking us through anything that we did need assistance on, especially this, because this is new. Um, for the town. So they definitely have so much knowledge to walk me through step by step on how to do this correctly.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah.
So the, the one to one thousand dollar increase in taxes would shift down somewhat somehow.
Yeah, but one thousand to two thousand would shift down.
Down. What would happen to the one thousand, the one dollar to one thousand?
There'd be like a hundred more that would go into, um, no increase. With, with no base, with no base in, I had two hundred eighty-two people with no increase or a decrease.
Okay, so one hundred people out of that one dollar to one thousand dollar would drop down into the no increase.
Right.
The bulk of them would just stay where they were?
Um, I mean, I don't know if they're all the same people, but yeah, um, there would be fourteen hundred. Um, without the, the phase in, I'm just rounding in twenty-one hundred with present. So better pain the lesser amount, so.
So I've got a question. So if somebody comes into your office, they're complaining about the rise in their taxes, do you steer them toward the homestead exemption?
I don't, well, right now there is no home, there, there is nothing. I don't steer them anywhere and. Ultimately, you know, my, my, uh, the office is supposed to look at the market value of property. You know, the taxes are, when you got to, right? So, um. If you disagree with the assessment or you live at a praise value, that's what I will go with.
Yeah, because it's usually the assessment and then that gets times by the mill rate and then that takes, that, that's what generates your tax bill.
Now, I know Norwalk is looking into the phase in as a potential test case. And a number of other towns are, are looking into this as well. Um, has any, I just sent a text message to my, uh, former brother-in-law who works for the Attorney General. Um, has anybody mounted on the commercial side of things, mounted legal challenges? To the proposed.
I don't know the answer to that, yeah.
Maybe that's one of my concerns.
But there is, um, I think Stephanie has, I, I give it, or they gave a list, I think the first.
Yeah, everybody has the list.
Yeah, there is a bunch of towns. It started with the twenty-two rebound is when this phase in stuff started. Um, so I haven't heard anything. I will say that the other towns that have done it are mostly large, um. Uh, towns where, you know, Norwalk, Stanford, um, Nagata, you know, they have large commercials. They have, uh, tax basis, so I don't know. I think it would be the phenomenon. And that's just shifting from.
Waterbury, Littlefield.
Yeah, but I, I don't know the answer to.
Stanford.
I, but I can certainly find out.
Ralph, you had something?
Kara, thank you for being a nice meeting to help explain your side of this. Um, as you know, and as a lot of folks here know, I've done a lot of research into this. The homestead exemption is granted by the Board of Selectment in a town. That has Board Selectment Town Meeting. It's not this board. It's not the assessor. It is the Board of Selectment who will decide what your exemption is going to be. Okay, and I think that's, that's an important fact because if we have nineteen hundred homes. That come rushing to the Board of Selectmen to get their assessment exemption. Based on the law that was passed back in June, uh, that, that can create a little bit of bottleneck for that board.
No, I don't think they have, excuse me, I don't think, they would not come through to the board. I mean, it would be a blanket thirty-five percent for all.
Well, the.
Residences are not, yeah.
The statute as written does not explain how it's a two. I look at, oh, we got, was it twenty-four, one fifty-five?
Thirty-five percent of the assessed value is rolling around to five.
Well, and it doesn't tell you how it, how it's administered. It tells you what it can be. It tells you who's going to do it, but it doesn't tell you how. Um, and I'd like to clarify and Kara, please correct me if I'm mistaken. I want to, I want to give an example of how the graduated phase in. Of the brand list is, is gone. And we'll use simple numbers that I think that most everyone can follow. If your assessment was two hundred thousand. Previous, and it goes to three hundred thousand. The difference is a hundred thousand. You take, in, in our case, we can do this over four years because we're going to have to do a revell again in twenty twenty-eight. So you take that hundred thousand divided by four. Year one, you add that to your previous assessment, assessment. So you add twenty-five thousand. Year two, you add another twenty-five thousand. Year three, add another twenty-five thousand. Year four, you will be at what the rebound number is, the new rebound number. That is established with the report in the double. Relatively simple. Um, that is what drives the mill rate. The graduating assessment or the phase in assessment is applied across the board. It has to be applied to everybody, including commercial. If you, if your assessment decreased, you go with the twenty twenty-four rebound. Am I?
That's correct.
Okay. I just want to put it in simple terms that I think most people can easily understand. Yes, there is a shift and, um, British, uh, pointed that out to me. And I have realized that in my analysis of the numbers, that commercial properties are, are going to see. Um, a pretty stiff hit in the first year. As well as there's other categories of assessments that will also. You know, rather than moderate the increase, they're, they're going to, they're going to see an increase. But it's a lot fewer and than the number of homes that are really going to get it. And when I see some of these values, some of these tax bills going up. If we do this all in one year, there's people that are going to be paying thousands of dollars more in your tax bill come July. And I can think of the most extreme case that I found in Wellington is an increase of eight thousand dollars in one year. The average, it's not that high. But there are some substantial homes out there with some very high assessments, some, some properties that are valued at over a million, you know, that have gone up to over a million dollars. So those folks are going to see a wicked tax bill come July. That's where it's at. And the decision to use phase in is not necessarily with this board. That can be initiated by a town leader. It's the town's legislative body that can initiate that. And we're into place, just as it's the town's legislative body that can rescind it.
I have some additional questions.
Yeah, I just wanted to just, yeah, let you guys know as well, like, it's a slow phase into getting that whole back. So it's not that it's stopping the tax from going up or stopping the taxes that you initially had. It's going to be a slower revenue from year one to year four.
Well, you're.
And you're going to have to raise that money.
Yeah, raise the money from the other upstairs, yeah, right.
Commercial and so land.
So this first year, seventy-five percent of it is delayed, um, residential. But it's, uh, all that impact goes to. And I'm thinking, I'm wondering about the, you know, the impact on commercial, particularly at a time where our revenues are underwater. Because it's drying up as far as development in town. That's one of the problems in this budget. It's not. It's not the spending exclusively. There's, you know, a quote. Um, that is about the revenue shortfall in it, that's, that's driving the overall taxes to be raised up. So to have that in any way play a negative, uh, having a negative impact on development. Um, I think is concerning. And the other thing I think is concerning is. I don't imagine changing, changing a tax policy that could, uh, create politi, uh, potential, uh, litigation. Uh, from the commercial or other categories that feel this way. I mean, they, for instance, apartment buildings, which I think have gone up in value. In this revow like fifty percent or so. No, or double, right, yeah.
Hundred and nineteen.
They've doubled. So it's like, uh, that group mainly, maybe also. I'm, I'm sustaining some of this, some of this spillover impact. And that seems to me to be a group that would be really upset. Um, so I'm wondering about, uh, that and also about, you know, because it's not until the fourth year when it's. A hundred percent, when the hundred percent phase in would work. Um, you know, uh, that also, th- there's a reference to seeing what the next revow says and then continuing it again. And I'm thinking four-year blocks, back to back, I think would have some, would, would have a serious impact on our. On our tax rate stability in town. I think it'd be real hard to know what's coming when, kind of like every year you get hit one way or another. I, I, you know, and so, that makes me feel like, even though it does push off some of the, some of the, uh. Some of the savings for the homeowner, I, it seems to me like the, the one-time relief, the homestead act thing, which, by the way. That's, that's one of the things I shared with the board, but, uh, you can look it up online, but this, um, Norwalk mayor. Who actually had experience with all this, um, in twenty twenty-three and testified. Uh, before the state legislature, but he's also a state representative. That led to the, the act that's that, you know, uh, you see that we're talking about with the, um. Quote-unquote homestead, the one-time relief of five percent to thirty-five percent. And he, he says, um, some pretty interesting things in this, but one is that he says. He, he draws it all together, what he saw in Norwalk, because it particularly had an impact on the commercial there. And he said, the hard, hard, harmful impact of these historic shifts in property tax burdens between the residential and commercial brand lists. And post-re- revaluation municipalities is caused generally not by local municipal factors. Such as excessive local budget growth or poor local system management, but rather result from both state and national economic trends. It, you know, meaning the pandemic, he calls it post-pandemic property tax shift. Rather lawmakers need to consider enacting prior to July one of one or more targeted statewide remedies. To establish tax fairness and equity. Um, and he says, this means that impacted post-reval, revaluation municipalities. May not be able to sufficiently blunt the destructive impact of these shifts only by the traditional local means. Of budget cutting or postponing projects or even by phasing in new revow values. So I'm, um, I, I, you know, recommend you look at it because there's some, um. Interesting things here, but I'm, I guess I'm also kind of concerned about or wondering about, would we, um. The, uh, do you have any information, Kara, about the, the impact on attracting new business? To a town that's doing this or doing something like that?
No, um, we're going to ask about it too, um. Yeah, uh, I, I will say that, um. Fortunately, the, none of the, the commercial properties appealed to the revow, you know, we worked with them and.
Yeah, we saw that, we saw the, uh, Walden Woodhaven, they were, yeah.
Right, right. Um, and, um. I, and I don't remember which one it is, but it's one of the ones I find. You know, it was first year. I, you know, maybe they don't care, but, 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 um.
So what, what does this mean for us tonight, this discussion? Is this something that could be, you know, even acted on, such short order, we're just talking?
Well, I asked, you know, if it did go to a town meeting, it would have to be approved at a town meeting prior to July first, right? Yeah. Four years, then after that, it's three.
Yeah.
And are the selectmen in support of it? Because I don't want to be have to call a town meeting.
I mean, I believe that just a petition can be passed around.
Yeah.
And with the decision along, that we call for the meeting, if you had enough residents signed, and we have twenty-five people.
I think it's only twenty-five, but. It's not a percentage of the.
Oh, we got the whole board here. We can have a meeting right now.
I like to respond to something that Stephanie said, because it sounds like. You're, you lean more towards the exemption than you do the phase in of revow.
You know, I honestly, Ralph, I, I feel uncomfortable about the whole thing, given that we don't really have any. Any legal opinion at all, whether this is good for Wellington, a town of fifty-five hundred, especially one that's looking for more, more business base. But go ahead and respond.
Okay. The, the exemption is, is applicable only to only my residential properties.
Right.
Um, to, uh, it can be a, a, a two-family, that's it.
Right.
The apartment complexes whose assessment went up one hundred and nineteen percent don't benefit from that. So the rents, I'm sure, will, will follow. The phase in revow will benefit. Anyone whose re- re- valve increase was substantial. And yes, it's going, both of them will shift the burden of the, the amount to be raised by taxation. From, um, single-family homes and two families. Onto those who did not see a dramatic increase in rebound, like commercial properties. FedEx, if, if you go with this budget as is, with the highest, um. Or she is about five percent, FedEx is going to. Without facing, FedEx is going to enjoy a thirteen thousand dollar decrease in their tax bill in July. Wonderful for them.
You mean, if you do know nothing?
Yeah.
Okay.
They will enjoy a thirteen thousand dollar decrease in their tax bill in July. Good for them. That's great. But all of us who live here are going to make up the difference.
It's okay, firstly, if we put it sad, what would it appear to look?
It's going to go up. I, I think they're tall over four years. With the previous budget, not, not what you're going to discuss later. Uh, over four years, spread over four years, they would see, uh, additional taxes of about sixty thousand. Fifteen thousand a year, if you want to average it out. It actually starts out high and it decreases once you get to, um, the end of your period.
Part of the problem I see with this, though. Is there's no. Data that we are hearing that tells us about the second and third order effects. Like, yeah, their taxes are going to go up, but what's their recourse going to be? If they start legal action, then that's something that the town ultimately has to eat as a cost. And, but frankly, I don't think we have the resources to fight a corporation like FedEx.
That's, I, admittedly, that's a gamble. Is this enough for them to initiate legal action when the statute allows the town to do this?
But we don't know. That's the problem, because there's too many unknowns right now. Kara, what were you going to say?
No, I mean, already it was appeal their assessment, I would say, right? I mean, as far as legal action is, I mean, that's their, they're as of right, right?
Yes.
Now, right. And then anything else, I don't know. I guess.
Any other questions regarding this?
Yeah, there.
Yes, uh, just, I'm curious with the phase in. So it sounds like it helps us with this tax year, but we're going to have another tax increase potentially next year and the year after that. So we're getting a double, we'd be getting a double increase. You know, you're, you're kind of compounding that tax as you go forward. It sounds like. I don't know.
Well, I think it's, it's more, it's more like the first year you would be feeling seventy, uh, I'm sorry, twenty-five percent. Of the, of the revow, this, if, the second year, you would, you would be feeling fifty percent. So that's the phase part.
Plus whatever the new tax.
Well, plus the new, you know, like, but, you mean the budget increase?
Right, so there was a budget increase next year.
Revow thing that we're dealing with now, because the big player, and so, you know.
But what my point is to, to, to my pocketbook, it, it doesn't matter. My pocketbook next year is fifty percent plus, uh, whatever the tax increase might be.
Yes.
So.
So plus this year, plus next year, plus five, but what it does is not have you.
Yeah.
Have that hundred percent impact of it plus.
Yep. I see the business, I'm just.
Yeah.
Not a possible.
And we're trying to, we're, we're trying to get the budget, the budget number down as far as we can. Knowing that, that, uh, that perfect storm of.
One of the other things I re waved, I found really interesting in that article that you sent out was that, um, the. Former mayor of Norwalk said that one of the big problems across Connecticut. Is that Connecticut has the second highest property tax rate in the country. And that across the board, all towns are funding their budgets. On the taxpayers' back for their property taxes. And this is an outdated method of budgeting. The things, that there, there needs to be a better system of doing things. And I, I just wonder if not this tax season, clearly it's a little late in the season. Uh, but I just wonder if for future years, we might want to consider alternative methods of funding. Uh, and if, if that isn't just right, if, if there isn't just a fundamental problem in. Using property tax as the primary method of paying for all of these budgetary things, because. Clearly with the rebounds and things like that, there's, there's a bit of a problem. It, it doesn't seem to be quite working, we, we. We hit a snag.
Properties, uh, properties tax, property taxes comprise sixty-one percent of local government revenue. Meaning our town compared to the US average of thirty percent.
Yeah, so. And that gets a little hot.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Christine asked about the, about the selection of an opinion on it, um, you know, as far as the night goes, I would, I would table the home sit exemption. I wouldn't touch that tonight, that's not, I don't want to extramend your conversation. Um, as far as the, um, the phase in, I'm, I'm the next feeling, I want. Real commercial development in our town in order to balance our revenue sources. And it is, it's hard, but on the other hand, um, the other side of the equation is. It's gonna be significant benefit to our taxpayers, and they get hammered. Um, with, with the evaluation. So, and I'm happy to, I was very afraid of that. That, that this was too much of our, our, you know, resources, um, but that would be. Um, and as I said, it would be a significant benefit, so it's difficult. As far as that, with the, the legal implications, I'm not a lawyer, but it's, it's clearly authorized by state law, so. I'm clear.
But we shouldn't embark on something unless we have specific advice about our town, either. Town attorney or preferably someone, if he's not, someone who's knowledgeable about tax policy and the impact. Because I, I just, I think when you do something quickly like this, that's this pervasive, you're not really. You're not really weighing all the outcome possibilities. I mean, there's a lot of offshoot stuff, and I, I feel like, I don't know, I wouldn't know how to answer that, but. Pete, are, do you have a view on this?
I do, and I, I've made it, I think I've made it fairly clear in previous meetings is that. I, I don't think that sh- shifting the burden from those who have gained dramatically. Uh, on their part, because, uh, uh, when your reval goes off, that means your property is worth more. That's the investment you made when you bought the property. So, so your investment is, is paid off, you're, you're making money. You shouldn't be shifting the tax burden from that to people who didn't make money. That's, that's just, and, and because there's more homeowners than there are business owners. We shouldn't be using the tyranny of, of, of the majority to, to, uh. To, to this. Um, the, the minority. That's just my feeling on the matter, and I, it's far less mathematical than. Ralph's going, is, is presenting, because that's the way Ralph's grade works and, and. Mind that point that way, I, I'm looking at a, a, you know, more philosophical.
But to add another philosophical comment to what Pete just said. This tremendous increase in value for your property. Is an unrealized gain, you don't benefit from that until you sell. But in the meantime, you gotta pay this burden in property taxes until that twenty-five. So if we hammer residential properties with a huge tax increase. Well, maybe it's time to cash in and move out of town.
That's true, and, and. I, I accept that, but like I said last Monday. If this was the opposite, if FedEx was suddenly worth a whole lot more and your property wasn't, would you want to pay FedEx's load? I believe you said no at the time.
I says probably not, Pete, and I've pondered that since. And for FedEx, or TA, or Love's, this is a business expense. This is the cost of operating where they are, are they gonna run out of town because? They got hit with the bigger increase in dollar amounts than the people who live here, I doubt it.
And Seattle, Washington talked the same thing about Amazon, and Amazon moved out. So it's, it's, they, I mean, that was much more thick and thin, but it, that, that's what happens there.
It's all about the tip, that's not gonna be, we don't know what.
You know, you know, I mean.
We don't know, I, I, I admit that, yes.
Yeah, so, so the one thing is, and hopefully we can move on, is that, um. Community has an opportunity to circulate a petition, send it up to town meeting if they so wish, and then the taxpayers will be accountable. Is there anything else on this? Kara, Ashley, thank you very much, thank you for your page, thank you for sharing the information that you brought to us.
And, and Bruce, uh. If, if you wouldn't mind, if there are requests for scenarios or whatever, I would prefer them come from the board if you. I mean, given to us of having a lot of, uh, different people asking me.
If anybody has any other questions, we can send them questions to me and I'll have a line to die. Alright, thanks again. Next, we'll move on to item number two. And probably three, which is vote on a month of decrease requested in general government budget. And after that, vote on a month of decrease requested for a B budget. So, um. I'd ask Donna to come up with these different scenarios regarding tax, uh. The increases in the budget for general government and education. He's made a scale here that goes from zero all the way to five point seven. Now, I think that on the bottom end, for the zero, there's not much appetite for that. I think up toward the top end, that there's not much, uh, taste for that either. So, you know, so I brought up what my main, what my beginning interest was in a one and a half percent in. Now, you know, you guys, that would be Christina, you might have something different in mind. And I'm wondering if you could share what you have in mind to help facilitate the discussion regarding this.
I'm sorry, what did you cite was your number?
One and a half percent.
Or which, or, uh, spending or total?
That was, didn't have to be raised in, uh, taxation.
Yeah. Actually, I'd like to hear from other people on the board who haven't spoken about where their number is. Like, I don't really, well, Walt was in here, Jeff didn't really say, I mean, what do you think is?
So we all, we all agree, what, what needs to be, we have to come with a budget that is gonna. A, B, uh, the taxpayers will accept. And will meet the needs of this town. We, in terms of transfer capital reserve, we all agree, like, as, uh, Ben Clark said. We all agree that fundamentally we can set aside. What we disagree about is how much. What we all that is. And, yeah, there is only so much that just town can. So. It was nice, uh, spreadsheet here. It's several scenarios. Would be increases, could be. That could be raised by the nation. Presently we're at five point seven after the Board of Selectmen, uh, presented their budget on Monday evening. That includes the, uh. Change made by the, uh, Board of Education nicely. That Phil Stevenson presented. Who are presently at five point seven percent, I mean, do you want a five point seven percent increase?
Um. No, I think we should come down from that. But, but Jeff, did you say what range you're thinking? I mean, kind of what you're.
You want me to elaborate for you? You know, the, the, uh. I have to go top of the bottom, wherever you want, whichever way you're looking at it. Zero to like one or one and a half, but those, that's not gonna fly, we know that. Be great. That's not gonna happen. The word is Stephanie.
Well, I'd, I'd like to belong to, if you don't mind.
Yeah.
I'd love to see one and a half, but, uh, my absolute max is, uh, probably two and a half.
So two and a half of reading Donna's thing here correctly. Has a newly proposed percentage increase of. Negative four point six four percent in general governance. Negative four point six four percent.
And yes, oh, yeah, I'm sorry.
And if I'm reading this right, that basically means that. We need to go three hundred twenty-eight thousand dollars below.
Yes.
Last year's budget.
Correct.
Okay, so this isn't just a dip into the increase, this is three hundred thousand dollars. Below last year's budget.
Yes.
Okay.
So.
Just making sure I have the math right.
If they, God forbid, if, uh, if, uh, the second referendum were to fail and we reverted to the, to the current year's budget, what would that? Minus four point six four be? Instead, it would be zero, right? So it's actually a lot better, almost five percent better, right? So it makes it really, to me, makes, makes. Makes it really crucial to try to do. Higher than.
What you guys have to say. Or not last week, but when we had Garrett extending the, uh, rebound. Though you had said that, you know, after looking at your figures and everything, you thought the budget had to be, uh, this flowing forty-four million dollars.
Uh, well, we would have to cut nine hundred eighty-three thousand to. The. Zero at a zero increase in expenditures. But that doesn't get to a zero net. We said, yeah, I think it's, I, I don't have it on my front, but I think it is around one point four.
I just have a question, reading these, these spreadsheets, and I, I may be reading them wrong, I, I hope I am. Uh, all these assume a two point seven seven percent increase in. In K, uh, pre-K eight education, regardless of what happened. And then the poll hit on, on any productionist in general government. Is that correct?
Yes, that is correct.
Now, protecting my turf. Seriously, what? Can we, can we take some, something out of K eight before I vote, go negative five percent?
That's the difference, Pete, we did.
Went to zero?
We didn't go to zero, Pete, you have, you have all that school savings in there, that's the only thing you're gonna hit. I mean, let's face that, that's what you're gonna take it out of, so.
I.
It's easier for you than it is for us.
All right, if you, if you're assuming that's where it's coming from, then yes, I, I wasn't gonna, I was gonna try to keep that at the three million mark. But not, now that you're saying that, I, I, I was sure, all right, go, go.
You're not gonna cut, you're not gonna cut town services.
That definitely hits the schools and I'm.
Start looking at, at, at hitting town services at, at, at a certain point, but. Now that, now that I know the assumption, sure. No, seriously, all right. You're assuming what I'm doing to pass a certain point, the reason I cut into that school savings last time was because. At this point, with this budget being what it was, we, we should have been at three million dollars towards the savings towards the new pool. And we were at three hundred and twenty-three, three thou- three million two hundred and twenty-five thousand. So by cutting out a hundred and thirty thousand, we were still a hundred and something thousand above our three million. And I didn't want to go below the three, three millions, that's, that's what I'm saying, I don't want to go below the three million, because that was the plan. All along, right, and like, I heard more and more people say during here, we, we have to understand that there's gonna be a. Savings for a school or savings for something coming up, I'm, I'm, I'm almost done with my rant, but. So I was, I was gonna try to keep that about three million and. But if I, if, if you're automatically assuming that's where I'll take it out of, I'll take it out of there, I don't care.
Well, you know, the thing we see.
I, actually, I won't say that, because I'm one of three votes on where it comes.
So the thing with C I P, though, okay, is that money's invested in a investment portfolio, okay? It's making three to four percent annually, around there. If you take inflation into account, it wipes out all of that profit that you made in your investment, and you're losing money. So you end up with your dollar bills in C I P being devalued, because the money's not doing anything. If you would have spent the money four or five years ago on upgrades, it would have cost a lot more than it's gonna cost today, probably forty, fifty percent less.
Okay.
So that's your, your buying power is reduced by almost fifty percent.
I, I have to break in here, I, I appreciate everybody's comments. They are valuable to the conversation, but this isn't a public hearing, it's a Board of Finance meeting, and I feel like we need to. Keep the public debate to a minimum, we have a lot of very serious work to do. And I think we need to concentrate on that, as opposed to the back and forth between everybody.
I, I would argue that if, the only, that we, we can consult someone in, in, uh, the audience. If they're an official or someone that we need to consult about that point of, of. The budget cuts we're talking about, but to, if we're gonna get anything done, we can't do what we did last Thursday, that was a public hearing. We've gotta do, we've gotta just, we've gotta argue it among the board members, we're the ones who are elected to do this on tour, so.
Okay, all right, but if there are people like Peter, Phil.
We asked for Pete's opinion, because there is a life man, but to get in a back and forth is, is kind of hard for us. That Pete and Phil, of course. Donna?
Can I just clarify what happened? And, and just to end the conversation.
Yay.
I asked the same question for you, Peter, you're welcome, when I saw the sheet today, I asked the same question. And Donna's response was, it's just for consistency, it's not the way it's gonna fall, it's just to show that that was where the.
Okay, thank you.
And she put the balance on the town side, it doesn't mean it's gonna fall that. It shows how much money, though, needs to be reduced in the budget to go to a two point five.
And those were the known factors.
Yes.
That she had.
So just, just for clarity.
For doing this, by the way.
Because I didn't ask that question.
Well, I just, I, I know, Donna getting that word, so.
You can't have two variables, then you have to do the X versus the Y. Two sets of parentheses, algebra two, and it lights the mass.
Two sets of parentheses, algebra too, and it lights the mass.
So Stephanie.
You have zone cuts, don't just look at me on this.
We still don't know what you're looking at, as far as the taxing fees goes.
Well, I think we should talk about um some things we could do, because from the all the feedback we've gathered and everything else. Seems like.
Well, doing what way, I mean, what we're really here to do is just decide. What the cuts are going to be, or what the reductions are going to be, and then the Board of Ed and General Government, they decide where that money comes from. They wanted to come out of their operating budget, they can take it out of their operating budget, if they wanted to come out of C I P, it can come out of C I P. It's it's a choice, it's a choice left up to them, as far as.
We decide that, though.
But we're not gonna go department through department.
No, but if.
Making.
But if we if we believe that the Board of Ed has to have their operating budget, we have to tell them that.
They don't have to, they've got the C I P.
But they, Board of Ed can't cut from C I P, only the selectmen can.
It's in the selectmen.
So we'd have to cut that.
That's why it looks like.
I have no stomach to go back into Board of Ed. I don't want to leave legally this board and tell the Board of Ed what.
No, suggested because that's where the cuts can come from, one of those two areas.
Yeah, so where is that?
You know, I mean, I think I think. Uh one thing we can do is, I don't wanna talk about it overall, because. I I don't I don't know that, I don't know that we can get there that fast, I think we need to talk about. I the first thing I would recommend is that we take. Um that we look at the hundred and ten thousand, it's been in the budget, it's in reserve, in the C I P plan, it's in reserve. For engineering, for Wellington Hill Fire Department, it dates back to when, to before we had the Joint Committee of the two firehouses. It's already covered in C I P, I believe, Donna, is it in, or do you know, Christina?
It's in it's in Fund Four.
It's in Fund Four. But but it's not, is it part of the town reserve, or is it part of, is it something in the?
It's in the, yes, it's part of the town. So, so, yeah, we could we could reduce. The C I P transfer by a hundred and ten thousand, that's that's something that Jim Marshall had been saying. From beginning of C I P season, um and. We just didn't do it, but we could reduce the. Transfer to for C I P by that that amount, using that rationale. That that money would be used to build a firehouse in the future, so.
I don't think he's here, but I did talk to Tom Snyder, and he's he's understanding of that.
So can we get the? Magic, I know we have these, but can we get the magic spreadsheet?
Do we put that on the screen, or? You know, the calculator?
As we go.
So we can.
You want the door, so Christina, you get the laptop in front of you, what's your ideas on where uh taxing fees should be?
Well, so so we heard earlier from all over the board, right? I mean, I don't think it, I don't think anyone could say that we're hearing overwhelmingly that needs to be zero, like like people were saying last week, I don't think that is the case, so we heard people say. Uh we heard Nick say two percent, we heard. We said three to three and three point five percent, um we heard Peter Lachin six say zero, um Laurie some runs at below five.
Jim, do you like said three to three point five?
Just just three and three point five, and and honestly, I think. Anywhere in the the three four percent is probably. It's not where we wanna be, um. And, you know, what? The the thing is, we're saying that we disagree on the amount that should be in C I P, I don't think going into this process, we were disagreeing on that, I think we all. Saw the spreadsheets and see the math and understand what's coming in three and four years. And that's the reason why those numbers are there now, is so that those things can all happen in in that order, but um.
They all.
Yeah.
They. They won't come to fruition.
But they don't all come to fruition anyway.
A lot of them don't come to fruition, though, because.
Well, there's the balance, our budget on pulling from a reserve, just that, just probably.
People vote against him when they find he become a disholic.
Yeah, but but the point is, if you if you don't have any planning in your town, and you're not doing anything. For to bond anything, because let's face it, folks, if we're gonna renovate those, you know, those old buildings. Um it's 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 in far far in excess of of building a new consolidated, because it can stand a consolidated. As economies of scale, maybe far in excess is not, is not, but it's several million over, um that's that's that's, let's put it this way. It's the most expensive option, it's gonna take bonding too. So it's not, but you know, reducing that is kind of saying, we don't wanna address it. At all, and I don't think that's responsible. This board in particular, planning for the town, to just kind of say, let's just set out, because the whole point of savings. As anyone who's done it knows, is the compounding amount, and even in C I P, we've got it built in for growth. You know, um we we were, we have a factor that's something like, I don't know, seven to ten percent a year. So that, you know, at the end of five years, you have more than five million if you do it. You have, you know, all that compounded, and it's it's not just sitting, sitting there not collecting interest or anything. Um so, I just think to, you know, to reduce it, I mean, we are in a position where we've already, our selectmen have already reduced it, it was reduced before that. Hundred fifty grand, they 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 took another hundred and thirty off of it, you know, where it's not like it hasn't been hit, everybody's kind of pointing to it as. The low hanging fruit, and it is the simple solution, but there's there's a loss there. As far as financial policy in the town, and I just wanna remind people that. With the with the selectman budget at two point seven year over year percent increase, and this school at ten at two point two at seven seven. The bottom line is, the tax to be raised is still five point seven two, and that's because of revenue shortfall, so it's gonna be. You know, to get that number down to, um I think even three percent is gonna be rough. Um in fact, what is it? Yeah.
I believe it's not only the revenue shortfall, it's a quarter million dollar increase in region ninety.
Yeah, I'm sorry, that's that's part of it, but that's not.
Seeing if I had to get down to three and a half, we gotta lose a half a million dollars. Million is 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 a significant amount.
Right, right, and that's that's a bunch, yeah.
Yeah, so so it so according to to my math, if we if we do the um. Cut another hundred and ten for the for for the fire department, um. That gets us to a five percent increase overall, a two point seven percent increase in spending, but a five percent increase overall, yeah, um.
That's better than five point seven.
It's better than five point seven.
But I mean, that's just a, that's an indicator of how much would actually have to come off, though, a hundred thousand dollars is only point seven percent.
Yeah.
So we're looking at, if we go. Much further. We're gonna be looking at cuts to services. Wherever they come from.
Can I make another proposal for registered services?
Yeah.
The one that we did?
Yes, but I have a proposal change that. Um so there's seventy five thousand dollars because of um savings in healthcare and. Um personnel shortage from the beginning of the year, so we would ask, or we would be okay if we rolled sixty thousand on that. Into next year's, and we returned over eighty thousand in the firehouse projects in the flood seventeen. We wanna use forty thousand on the firehouse project, but we rolled back in the flood seventeen during the C I P process, to make it another hundred thousand dollars. My fear with going with the full seventy five thousand, we're very tight in our operating budget this year, to the point where we're gonna have to come back to Board Finance to ask for a little bit of that. To just make it to June of July first, this would not affect our operating budget going into next year, so we'd be willing to, and hope you guys take that as your consideration.
I think that's a good tweak.
Yeah.
Um and that, but that that definitely ameliorates the um the Will- Wellington Hill thing, I mean, I mean, as far as. As far as that that fun, it takes, you know, it makes that.
I think total, that would be your two or two hundred and ten, if you give it that.
Yeah.
So so you're saying another.
He's saying.
Another hundred.
He's saying sixty thousand, you know, toward the unspent payroll on the ambulance and pay for taxes.
And.
Instead of seventy five, which which was what we talked about earlier, and then um for, and yeah, and then.
Forty thousand out of seventeen, of the, because we returned over eighty of that. This year, that was planned for the firehouse um addition study, or the addition plans. Um so I did look really quick.
Forty from what?
We had returned forty thousand, we had reduced at least the eighty thousand out of seventeen. This year. So I did look at the math for the on seventeen ballots, um and forty thousand, it also stayed.
So a hundred.
So it's a hundred total.
Actually, okay.
So and, okay, so a hundred total brings us to a two point two percent increase in expenditures and a four point four percent increase. Which is better than a five point seven. Also verified.
Helen just voted down two percent two days ago.
I was, sorry, would you would you give us an overs again?
Uh it's a two point two percent increase in expenditures and a four point four in that to be raised.
And the sixty is to, uh that's that's to take to the. The forecast for your your the current budget. Yeah.
Yes.
The the ambulance budget for twenty five, twenty six. Are you following this?
Yes.
Me too. No, no, thank you, thank you.
Once again, coming through on plan.
And I keep looking at, you know. Three and a half percent next be raised, brings you. Bill to hovering an under a million dollar grant certain capital. Million dollars is supposed to get. It is a significant amount of money. It's. The amount that would have to be spent on that, when we come to the decision on a project, is gonna be significantly higher than that, so that it's about time to ease that a little bit.
The harsh realities rocking through all these projects all at once, and no route, you're gonna use cable vaccines. There's only so much.
And some of them have been out there since nineteen ninety nine. I I just went twenty six years, I did an idol, I get that, I I know, but I'm just saying, they're still on the plan. And none of the costs for it are going down, so if you reduce how much money you're saving too much. It's gonna, it's just gonna be untenable, and that's. A large part of the reason why we're in the position we are with a lot of that stuff. Is because we continuously take from the savings to try and be able to do something.
I mean, at some point, you just have to be honest with the town and say, look, we're not gonna do these projects.
Maybe, but.
It the other, the other part of it is, it's not just projects, and and one of the things that I'm really thankful to Jim Marshall for is, he spent a ton of time. Um itemizing every single piece of equipment that we have, and what the replacement schedule is, and what what their their cost is gonna be. Where before, it was just sort of, in the next five years, do we need another dump truck, yeah, probably in year four, okay, we'll put that in the plan, but it's not this year, so we don't have to worry about it. He he really like figured it out, um and. These numbers that that are going in, not not for the school fund, but the other number is reflective of that, and one of the things that's on there is buying a dump truck next year. And it's because that's been on the plan for the last three or four years, um maybe even five. Um but like. What we could do is delay that, not spend fifty nine dollars, that's another good deal we could take out of this. But there's there's a whole bunch of other things in all of the other year.
Two is packed.
Yeah, your next year, there's a lot of things, so we're really pushing this dump. Into the next year, where there's a lot of other things, we're probably end up pushing something that's on that list to to another year, but um.
And that's.
And that's just what we do, that's just how we how we've always gotten, and that's gotten us nowhere, it's that's gotten us to this position.
By doing not, going be the.
They they bought up used too, and that doesn't work out well either.
We're at the point where we go, whatever vehicles are gonna cost, maybe you look at a full review, that's that's gonna happen.
That's that would come out of, that would be fifty thousand out of leasing in public works.
Yeah, so I mean, I would say, I would say, before we start cutting other things, let's do that, because we did ask. Right, it'll probably be, she probably said, but. We asked at the time, because he's also getting another priority, what's your priority?
We have the mower.
And he wanted the mower, so the mower is in the plan, so could get the mower, but.
So he's still getting some.
Wait one year for this truck, and we save fifty thousand dollars.
But you know, the thing with emergency services and planning for that is, we don't know what the needs are going to be for emergency services, because we have a committee that's being, that's been put together to decide that. We have a consultant who's working on that, and they're gonna come back and tell us what Wellington's needs are, based on the experience he has. And he might come back and say, we only need one firehouse, or we don't need a fifteen million dollar firehouse, like James Marshall said, you only need a three million dollar. Firehouse, so we don't even know what we're saving money for, same thing with the schools, there's what, over three million dollars?
But we do have.
Let me let me finish, there's over three million dollars in there for school roofs, how long's that money been in there, and there's no new school roofs?
It's been in there for one year.
Okay, but we don't, money is there, okay, all right, but we have other money in C I P too, that's been sitting there, and like I said before, it loses its value the longer that it's since there. So if.
That is not, that is not, I'm sorry, that has not been one of our issues, is that the money's been sitting there for too long, this is a very new concept that we've only, we're only in year two or three of. Um of actually trying to to do it and stick to the plan, so um. Uh before that, we didn't have any money in in reserve, and we hardly put any money into reserve, and we we kept um.
The money's sitting in there for even three years, for when inflation was eleven percent or higher.
For two years now.
Values.
But, but but it's there now, and we have it.
Well, I know it's there, but what's it worth today compared to what it was worth two or three years ago?
How would we have it, though? When the the problem was, when the school vote came up, we we had nothing saved. We had no way to to mitigate this 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 thing, and once. It, part of, part of the reason why it's hard to even imagine having any of these buildings. We even have three million dollar fire department, which I don't know if you can build a fire station for three million dollars.
That's what we, that's what we're about to retire on, on the library, it's three million.
Last year for three million dollars.
A whole new building?
Yeah.
Really, wow.
Yeah, everything doesn't have to be tied to all the government.
But still, I guess I I wanna.
We're not take care of it, ten years from now, we'll be talking about how it's falling apart.
One of the things we focus on here too is the needs of the departments, and not the needs of the taxpayers, what the taxpayers are going through, that's been totally lost. The main discussion is about where are the schools getting, what's fired, but the fire department getting, what's this this department getting, but you're not looking at the impact of the tax increases on.
But they're getting it to serve the town, so it's not, I mean, we're not talking about like. Any of this.
But how much of it is really needed, it's like the fifteen million dollar firehouse, do you need a fifteen million dollar firehouse with three million will suffice?
There's still.
As far as bonding, though, if we're a new school, do you think that people are going to bond? Millions of dollars in bonding, when they don't even wanna pay for these tax increases here, they already turned down a new school once a few years ago.
I have no idea.
Creeping back into the whole picturing.
No, it's not, it's not creeping back in, it was it was a one time thing, the conditions were completely different than they are today, the stake is. For this town is already committed to an eighty percent share.
No, not yet.
Well, close, close, and the, but I mean, that's significantly better than what it was. The point is, why are you thinking the town never wants it, why are you thinking we just, and and I just wanna say to the point of. Putting it in now, when you don't have blueprints, is because by the time you have blueprints, it's it's too late. Then, you know, it's too late to actually have a reserve, because then you could move faster when you get to that stage.
And the the thing is, that what's in the C I P is is grossly underfunding, whatever any of these things would be, so. And the the thing is that what's in the C I P is is grossly underfunding whatever any of these things would be. So. I I mean, we don't. We were we were thinking that it's gonna be a school repair project. But and. That. Is still not enough for for like what what we were putting in. It's not what the the math was showing it should be, the amount. If we were actually going to doing that in five years or four years, whatever. So we're still not, we're not saving enough. It just just but we need to save something.
What what do we think will pass if we put it in front of the town second time?
What is it now that after you? And did you take out the dump yet?
Um did I take out the dump? No, I did not. Let me see. I think what it is with the dump.
I think the closer you get to over three percent. That a budget will be voted on by people possibly. I don't even know if they would accept three percent, but I think. Four percent or higher, it's gonna get rejected. We're gonna be back here again with this in in another few weeks. That's that's the reality of it.
Well, if people actually don't sort it, that's definitely gonna.
Well, you know, they're just exercising their first amendment rights.
Totally.
Okay.
I I understand.
That's that's all part of the political process.
Yep, um so if we. If we do the fire department, hundred and ten, the dump at fifty, the ambulance at a hundred. Fire department two hundred.
No, it was a hundred and ten. No, that's not ongoing there. Sixty thousand of it of it is going to. The next to the budget we're working on.
Okay.
And uh do in the in the ambulance, uh you know, cost center was what have you. Yeah, it's not all reserved.
Yeah, the the delay of purchasing the dump truck. So all of that so far is uh five hundred fifty two thousand dollar cut. Um total with the Board of Education's cut and what the select minority did. Um so we are at a two percent increase in expenditures of four point one in net to be raised.
Lower. I'm not tracking. I just the numbers for maybe other people in the audience we.
We're we're.
I know, I know, I know.
I just wanna ask Galaxy question. Did you first say sixty toward the payroll line for for fiscal year twenty five, twenty six? And eighty? Two. You said forty, okay.
We had returned eighty. I don't wanna take.
Okay, that's where I heard. Okay.
Can you expand that on the screen? It's like blurry and you can't read it.
Can we full screen it or uh I can copy that. I thought it was this. That's the best I can do. Okay.
Okay, Christine, can you recap your numbers?
Okay, so we'll we'll call up the the Wellington Hill project for a hundred and ten thousand.
Yes.
Which is really just a cut in the in the reserve transfer.
Yes.
Then there's a delay in purchasing the dump truck.
Yes.
That's fifty thousand dollars.
Yes.
Then there's the ambulance um slash Wellington one. Project. I don't know whatever.
See ambulance is is.
Payroll.
The ambulance transfer out.
Yes.
It's it's sixty thousand.
Well, I thought it was a hundred thousand.
No, it's sixty thousand to that part, forty thousand to the town reserve for the fire department, right?
No, we're going to payroll. Or however you want.
But both are going to payroll?
That was my thought was.
A hundred thousand to the transfer out, okay.
But it's a hundred thousand total.
Yes.
Yeah.
That so that's that. That's what I got. Okay.
So, okay, so the Wellington Hill, that's the road or um?
No, that's.
That's the fire department.
That's just uh we had earmarked for for them to do can um design, engineering for Wellington Hill. Before they before the other department had the whole issue with the mold and shut it down.
We both had.
And it's.
They both had funding. Um so that basically the committee saying now. Hold on, we're gonna figure this whole thing out. But either way, that money is for designing engineering of a new station somewhere.
It's still gotta, it's still gotta go to that purpose, a por- purpose. It's earmarked in the reserve and this year's. Um C I P and um or Wellington Engineering.
So we don't need to add another hundred and ten thousand there. I mean, it would be good to, as much as it could, but if that makes sense, that's the least famous. And then. Yeah. So that gets, that's gets, what I'm showing is a two percent increase in expenditures in a four point one. Net to be raised.
So how much total on that?
Uh to- well, the five hundred and fifty two thousand dollar.
These additional things we talked about.
Okay, so uh.
So that leaves us at around three percent, right? About four point one.
You might be looking at five hundred thousand off of. Those, I'm saying five hundred fifty two total um from the last vote.
Yeah, I may have taken five hundred additionally.
Yeah, it's not five hundred. It's not with the board of it and the.
Yes, I'm getting four point one percent and the net to be raised six hundred seventy thousand five thirteen.
Yeah, I'm off by just like a hundred dollars.
What was your number again?
The net to be raised.
Yeah.
Is six hundred seventy thousand five hundred thirteen dollars.
Uh how much would have?
Oh, is there another one?
Four point one percent is the percent.
Yeah.
Uh how much would have to come out of C I P savings to go from four point one percent to point nine?
Okay, okay, four point one, two point. One point two. Thank you. I didn't I didn't get that far yet. This, hold on. It's one point two decrease. Okay, so. One percent represents sixteen thousand. Two hundred and sixty dollars, point one of a percent. Represents. Hold on. One percent, this is. Point one, the sixteen thousand two sixty. So we have point two, so sixteen thousand two sixty. And one. Half a percent. One percent. To. Six oh three. So you would have to reduce it another one hundred ninety five thousand one hundred twenty three dollars.
So you know what? Below three percent, you'll get him and him. Okay, and we can go home. So you're you're not gonna get me.
And what is the, what is the uh spending down, the spending year over year down with that two point nine? It not to be raised.
Okay, well, that is not to be raised, it's two point nine.
Yeah, no, I I said if that is, what's the what's spending?
It's about, well, the the dollar amount is about four hundred and seventy five thousand over. Last year. I mean, so where are we gonna get a hundred ninety five thousand from?
You've done a good job so far.
Yeah, I feel like.
You've been very creative.
Done all the work.
That's like, you know what? You'll be recognized for it too.
No, yeah, not really. Not really.
Oh, what? Well, that's not, that's not totally train wrecking. The C I P savings taking a hundred and ninety five out of it. It's it's a significant deduction, but it's not train wrecking it.
Well, it is, you've gotta realize we've taken, we've already taken a lot out of it.
You can take a little more.
Well, I know you, I know you say that, Bruce. I know you say that. We're trying to balance here. We're trying to balance. Current day needs, what goes to the taxpayers and and thinking a little bit further than this next fiscal budget. Thinking our 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 town still may wanna thrive in some way.
I know.
So you know, you can't do it from a standstill. It's like pole vaulting. So. Did you, did you have something to say, Phil?
Just look at the towns around us and how they've rejected their budget. Some of them two times, they're going to a third one. Like I said, Talon was two percent.
But that's not new that that is.
Residents of Talon had money for an increase like that, we turned it down. Our residents don't.
Right.
Not all of them, some of them do.
Talon, Stafford, Coventry have always had multiple for long, for many years running, have had multiple. Uh referendums and more than two, and I think in all those towns. So it's not.
Years, it's been a tipping point for other towns. It was a tipping point for this town last year. And I think if you send them an increase. Even above two and a half percent, I think it's gonna get rejected.
Well, I think we end up with um.
And then, okay, so.
Right, isn't it? If it gets rejected, we actually end up with a higher spending increase than that. So I'm pretty sure.
Yes.
Yeah.
So if we reverse back, it's just a chaos for the whole for those. Just tell them about the chaos, Donna. Yeah.
You said that we we've cut that uh savings for the school bonding every year, and that's true. But it was jacked up five hundred thousands before it was cut by a a hundred and fifty, hundred and twenty five thousand last year. So even though it was a a cut, it was a three hundred and seventy five thousand dollar increase that was a cut. And so this year, even with a hundred and ninety five thousand dollar cut, we're still at above the three million dollar mark. Where we should be at this point. So yes, it is a cut, but.
No, I understand.
Still ahead of where we belong. And when it comes to the hundred and ten that you were discussing earlier for the fire department. The bonding for everything other than school is about half of what we have. Reserved for bonding for schools in C I P. And that's why I I I'm reticent on letting go of that hundred and ten. Because that goes towards the fire department building. And as it stands in C I P now, the estimates are. About seventeen million for a new school and about seventeen million.
We're not letting it go, Pete. We're not letting it go. We're. We're moving that in, we're we're moving that into the. Um I mean, we're saying it's covered already. Yeah, because it's right now, it's designated so specifically.
Right, well, if you if you move that up to the bonding, not for school, but the bonding for everything else in town, I can see that. That would that would.
That's what it is.
But it's not gonna save us anything that your reports are are actuated. By moving into that one.
We're doing, we're we're doing the what?
We're doing what's going in by that amount.
Yeah.
Because we have it.
It's in, it's in, it's in cat real cash money.
So it's in real cash money, so you don't have. But I would, I would add it, add it to that line instead of. Putting it in that line and the the line the same. Did you see what I'm saying?
Yeah.
I'm I'm. I don't.
We gotta do something, Pete. I mean, you know, and that's something that has gotten to. Handbars, you know, in the in the C I.
I I got you. I I understand what you're saying. I'm just hoping that you understand what I'm saying.
I do understand what you're saying.
All right. What are we looking at?
You were finding us a hundred ninety five thousand dollars. Yes.
Yeah, that was one ninety five, one twenty three, what to get the two point nine, right?
Yes.
Okay.
One ninety five. Um. We could take up collection.
Have all the cuts been out of my budget so far?
C I P, but it's not.
C I P is twenty percent of my budget. So it's that would be the general government budget.
The timeout here, the schools are in C I P. Everything is capitalist in C I P. It's not, you know.
We haven't touched the general government budget.
Thank you.
Can you recommend cuts from education?
No.
Okay.
How about from general government?
No.
How about from region nineteen?
Yes.
And we've captured some, we've captured some un- unspent payroll, thanks to Wellington.
Jump alone in 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 region nineteen, just the increase in nineteen is two thirds of everything we pay for fire service. Not EMS, fire service. It's uh. We have a hundred and seventy five kids over there. We have six, five thousand something people in town. The ambulance goes out several times a day. Uh fire service, how many? Tree uh trees in the wires that we have now. Uh they're going out all the time.
Hundred and seventy five kids?
We didn't touch the trees.
Yeah, the last count that I got from region nineteen was a hundred and seventy.
Oh, yeah, okay.
Oh, yeah, we keep looking at the numbers every year that graduated.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. And it's always a lag of several years before the impact hits you like, you know, of of a large. Um we're going through a smaller group. So it's never synced up. This year it's this, so this year the budget's that. It's. There's a lag in years for that.
Let's go back to the two point ninety percent. Can everybody live with that?
Well, we still have to find the hundred and ninety.
Yeah, no, I wanna know what it is. I don't wanna just pick a number.
C I P, that was my suggestion of C I P savings.
Here in the school.
Yeah.
I would compromise on that and say, and see what it does if we. To address Pete's issue about the the uh growth, I think there's a seventy thousand um. Option. To make that, to pay back all of that one point three seven five or whatever it was. I think it were, aren't we about seventy thousand short?
Yeah, I think so. And I wanted to, Sean, about that.
When we went into our. Uh order of selecting meeting. If. Uh. We we were at three million two hundred and twenty five thousand. For that that account. And that's why I suggested taking the hundred and thirty. But that was, that was the suggestion I was making.
Three two seventy five.
Yes, three two two five. Million, well, a hundred thousand right there, see up.
Uh, okay.
And and although I I I'm taking the hits for cutting, we're. You gotta remember you added in the three hundred there for. Five hundred thousand dollars, which is a half a million, which is what we need to get down to. Where we're going now.
That was for all of capital, not just for that. Not just for the school reserve. It wasn't for the school reserve. You're talking about the whole capital. Everybody who's in.
Right, everybody.
That's just because like like, remember, we were talking about inflation. It's like you can't stay at the same rate every year. I think that's what you're talking about.
I just figured out.
I got this here someplace. I just gotta remember where I put.
But mine are so stylish. I'm just not sure what the number is now, because um. Because the first, so so the first year of C I P, we put a million dollars in to the board of that account, right?
Yes.
And then the next year, it was one point.
But then did it get trimmed down before we finalized the budget that year?
It it went to one, it went to one point five, which was trimmed down to one point three seven five.
Okay.
Is that correct?
And then that was because we were gonna do the roof and needed the cash on hand.
And and age back.
And ended up not happening.
Right.
So. Um. We should have. To be on track, three million. So, so is that what we have right now, is two point three seven five in there?
Uh, no. We. We had two, two point, two. Uh, two point.
Cause yeah, a little bit of one cent.
Yeah, a little bit.
Yeah.
I think it was two point. Two, 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 two million, two hundred, at the end of this, it was gonna be three million, two hundred and twenty-five dollars.
Yes, that's correct.
Two hundred and twenty-five?
Yes.
Three million, twenty-five. So, so if we, if we were, that's. The the original plan was to put a million in each year, but then build it a ten percent escalator on on all of all of it, but.
It's.
Forget that, um, that was just that particular year, it's what seemed like a great idea, um. And it was possible and.
But ten percent of of uh, twenty percent of my budget is. In that volume.
No, I know, I know. So, if we wanted it to be at three, at the end of the, end of next year, if we wanna have three million dollars there.
Yeah.
How much do we need to put in? We need to put in two point, two, just six, well, I think we need to put in six hundred and twenty-five thousand.
Yes.
But we were, we were at eight fifty, we already cut a hundred and thirty. So, that leaves. Oh, you cut a hundred and ten, and a hundred and ten, that's a hundred and fifty.
Well, early, yeah.
Six million, twenty-five.
Yeah, she's talking about the selecting cut was a hundred and thirty.
Yeah.
And then add on to that though, right?
Yeah, so that's like, yeah, yeah, so it was eight fifty, then they cut one thirty, so that was, that's seven twenty. We need six twenty-five. In order for it to be three million at the end of next year. That's the minimum. We can't go lower than that.
So. So what's the deal?
Can I just jump in, so if your, your math is good so far, with the first, almost a hundred and ninety-five, that puts you at five twenty-five, you're a hundred thousand shy. You do Walt's one ninety-five out of that.
Right, yeah, I'm saying Walt is too, too much.
We are a hundred, it's a hundred thousand.
Yeah. Yeah.
And if you do have, but you're at a three point five.
Should we do a hundred thousand, ninety-five thousand?
Nine seventy-five.
Yeah, if we do, if we do ninety-five thousand, we're at one point six percent expenditure. Um, three point five.
That'd be raised by tax rate.
Yeah.
I say that like one minute ago.
Probably, once the, once the expenditure. Um, expenditures are what percentage?
Okay, so it's, the total expenditure increase over last year is three hundred and thirty-six thousand. The one point six percent increase in expenditures. Even though Pete's budget's gonna go down by a hundred and sixty thousand dollars. And then the net to be raised by taxation is five hundred and seventy-five thousand, which is a three point five percent.
That expenditures doesn't, that's, doesn't keep up with inflation.
No.
Well, well, like, inflation has soared. Kind of underfunded.
Yeah.
And if you think of the inflated taxes, people are gonna be paying because of the rebal, that's reality. You have to take that into account, you just can't discount it.
I'm I'm not discounting, I'm just saying, I don't know how we're gonna go much lower, if we're already not. Funding enough to keep up with just what stuff costs.
If the will's there, you can do it, if it's not there, you're not gonna do it. And we'll be back here in six weeks doing the same thing.
Honestly, I think going from seven point five to three point five. Is pretty dramatic. I mean, you know, um, we don't have the, we don't have the luxury of time, because this process has been slowed down somewhat. Um, I'm, you know, I guess to force us into um frenzy about reverting to this year's budget. Of uh, of uh, you know, a zero-based budget, but um. But I think, you know, I I think that's, you know, if, I think there, yes, there are some voters who um, who want. It to get down to as low as it possibly can, I mean, maybe even negative numbers would 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 even be. Not necessarily a sell for them, there are other people, I think, in town who want to maintain some services. They're not really maintaining, we are cutting things, we've done significant cutting here, so we're not maintaining, but. Um, at least some of the things that we're talking about so far, yes, are, you know, we've, we've already hit capital pretty hard. And when we've hit like um, reserve for the future, at, in that capital. Um, but as far as expenses go, I mean, one point six is pretty. Pretty flat, I'm not, you know, I'm not sure. Um, how much further we can go, and one of the things we've been trying to do is not completely undercut. Town services, and this is not a big step. What we have, I mean, we have a lot of departments that are like one person and maybe some, you know, alone. And some of them with one person and someone that's ten hours, you know, it's not, it's not like there's, oh my gosh, that's so fleshy over there, um. Uh, so. What's that?
In in my, in my computer office.
How much to get down to two, that was point nine?
It's a good answer.
One ninety-five, another hundred ninety-five.
Yes.
So a hundred ninety-five thou, that'll get you below three.
Thank you.
It's kind of a compromise, I mean, we're five point seven now, there are people who are like zero.
Do you think three point five is a compromise?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
I think when I started off the whole conversation, I used that graph for you. I said that fifty percent vote is at three point five.
Your, your chart said five.
It had five on one end and said it wasn't gonna pass at five.
Yeah, but it's it's it's. That's where, that's where people are looking at it, though, they're looking at the rebal along with the net to be raised for uh spending. I don't think we can go any lower than three point five, and reasonably going to spend everything that we are trying to do. We still need more cuts to C I P.
But that. That bites your nose off despite your face, because then you have nothing in, nothing to prepare for the future. We know that stuff is going to continue to degrade. Vehicles don't magically get, become in better condition, buildings don't fix themselves. Like, you have to have money there to do stuff, there may not be a plan for it, some of the stuff might not come to fruition. But it's asinine to think that you can take all of your savings away and be able to do anything.
And we've also heard from multiple departments saying to us, well, we're going to be coming in front of you. Next year to ask you for the money to fix all of these things that we've just taken out of the budget. Because we can't afford to have it in the budget now. So where is the money going to come to fix those things that are no longer in the budget?
I'm responding to the taxpayers, taxpayers want more.
But I'm responding to reality, I think we're responding to the taxpayers too, Bruce.
Reality is, if you look at town after town, how they've rejected their budgets, the same thing is going to happen here, it's inevitable. It happened last year, people were shocked, it's happened this year again, and if you send three point five. We're going to be back here in six weeks doing this all over again, I almost guarantee it.
Oh.
You you got one point five.
Well, two point five, that was my, that was my starting point.
Yeah.
I said before, I take two and a half percent, maybe a little more, over three percent, no way, though.
So, I mean, I haven't heard, besides. C I P, where, where else would you propose this?
I'm not willing to cut any more town services, I'm not willing to, I'm not willing to bring up anything important at this point.
Yeah.
A mil- a million a year was supposed to be designated to the schools, right?
Again.
There's how much there.
Two million, uh, I mean, sorry, there's one million, three hundred and seventy-five thousand there. Sorry, two, yes, two million, three hundred and seventy-five thousand. And so that's why, um, that's why I just said ninety-five thousand.
And so the original intent was to put aside a hundred thousand dollars per year.
Million.
A million, that's a year.
No, a million a year in reserve to alleviate the tax impact of a bonding project. Either a major renovation on both schools or one, um, or um, consolidated school. We had the same thing in the firehouse, not knowing, the schools have done, um, I mean, they've got uh. You know, reports and costs out the yin yang for all their options. The firehouses are kind of just getting started about a consolidated plan, and they're waiting for the study results. To see where that should be, what that should be, we, we just don't have the data yet to make those decisions, so. And as far as the process goes, the schools are are ahead of that, but of course. Um, everything takes a long time, but if you're, if you, if you're like. Taking that down is the one thing to just go to, to balance an operating budget, you are, you know. You're just moving further away from something that will have um, a benefit to. The citizens of the town when it comes time to do it. That's what I think the value of, there's not, there's not too many people who are arguing for, you know, down the road, some people may think. I'm gonna move before them, so I don't care, or or they just don't care anyway, but other people, I think, are thinking. Jeez, when are we gonna do something with schools, I've heard that so much, and everybody campaigned on do, on addressing the schools. After last year, so after the, after the referendum failure, so that's three years. Um, and, and yet, this seems like we're just negating that whole. Discussion because it has sort of fallen away now, now that we're talking about rebal impact and stuff, but. And we're not talking about doing what we were hoping to do as far as a trajectory, we're, we're hitting it.
I don't think that people realized how much the, the rebal.
I don't either, yeah.
Including us, including us, when we, when we have these discussions, and I think that that plays a factor. In our change of decision here and now, I mean, we don't, we can't predict, maybe two years from now. We actually might have some smaller businesses that may decide that they wanna come to.
Real hard.
Yeah.
Not a warehouse, that's, that was.
You're my brother.
That was what I was thinking, you know, we're arguing about things that we can't fix in the past. We're arguing about what we are not quite sure about, what's gonna happen in the future, yes, we have to save. But I think about all the people in town who can't even save any money, who are relying on a food bank in town. And we're, we're saying, well, we have to save for this, but should we run out those people out of our town?
No, that's why we're nailing it, and I get it, I get it, like, we're nailing it already, is what I'm saying. So we're addressing it, we're coming down, what, four percentage points on the, on the uh. Um, percentage of tax, I mean, uh, percentage of uh, tax to be raised.
Not gonna be enough.
Well, that.
Hey, let me put it to you this way.
That's your big roots, and I, and you, and you, you've stuck to the sort of low ball, zero, one point five.
You know why?
At one point, it was the question for covering, for being generous about covering, covering the region nineteen. But that's in cost, that's not in bottom line.
We talked about what we ran on, one of the things I ran on, and if you look online, it was to look out, and then you'd be elderly, and for people who needs to quit the animal, what's going on out there in this economy? So that's what I'm doing, so I'll tell you what, if you think that you have the votes that pass this, you go ahead, you make a motion to vote, vote, and we'll see where it's at. If it goes through, we're gonna be back here.
So does that mean that you're, you're personally gonna oppose it?
Yes, it does, I already made that abundantly clear.
Well, I, I thought it, I thought, I thought it needed to be, I thought it needed to be uh. Um, clarified.
Clarified.
So, you're still talking about one point five, or you're gonna do that?
I, hey, what did I just say before, I thought I was wanting to go to two point five percent, okay?
Oh, two point five.
Five was a stand, starting point.
This isn't even two point.
Negotiate and make a compromise.
Yeah, this is.
I'm just gonna go ahead and make a motion.
I, I agree.
And go ahead.
I'm gonna move that we reduce the um, selectmen's budget, the general government budget. In following ways, we cut one hundred and ten thousand out of the res, the. Transfer to reserve for the willing, for the um, consolidated fire department. I forgot what it's called.
You don't have to.
It's called the town reserve, it's called town reserve, I.
Yeah, the town reserve for the, for the fire station building, another fifty thousand to delay the purchase of a dump truck. Another hundred thousand for the ambulance payroll, and then another ninety-five thousand for. Uh, to reduce the transfer to the school building uh, project um, fund, for a total of. Um. I don't know what that is. Well, whatever the total is, um, and I think it leads to a one point six percent. Increase in uh, expenditures and a three point five percent in net to be raised.
Here.
Yeah, I just for clarification, that ninety-five, that you're taking more out of the.
School.
Yeah, but the, does that bring it down to the three million level? Okay, that's, I didn't know how many times you had cut, all right, thank you.
Yes, that brings us to exactly three million dollars.
Oh, never mind.
That's why we did it.
I, I know, I know where, where you're at.
So, Donna, I have that that's three hundred and fifty-five thousand in cuts, yeah. What, second, by the way.
Well, so you wait for the. Okay.
Can you see that?
Okay.
I can see it.
Ryan, but I just. Hold it, but that one, it's still not big enough.
So, three hundred and fifty-five thousand in cuts.
Yeah, that's what I got.
So what's, but what's the percent to be raised?
Three point five.
Three point five?
As the, and what's that due to the expense side, it's immersive to.
One point five percent increase in expenditures.
Yeah, I don't know what that is.
Do we have a motion?
Yeah, motion is seconded, can I second it?
Any discussion? You, all those in favor say aye.
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 Those opposing, aye, aye. Same. All right. We will be back here again, we'll just adopt last year's.
Maybe you won't, maybe not.
Yeah, I know, we'll see. So, now we will move on, the present is speed.
The board of that.
Oh.
Yeah.
Uh, I make a motion to further cut the board of that budget by one hundred and sixty-two thousand, five hundred and fifty-three dollars, that's presented last week.
Well, second that.
That's true. No, there's a way, if it's, yeah, no. In a better way. It's not a further cut, they already.
You tried, you took him fight over it.
I, I'd have at it if I said it wrong.
Well, no, I, I.
Cause that just makes it seem like they cut it again from last week.
Well, it's a further cut from where we started.
We have to accept.
We didn't accept it last week at all, it's not later.
We accepted, John. We just didn't, we didn't. Was, it was seconded, was it?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, no, I, I get it, I'm. No offense.
Any further discussion? Do we have a second?
That's it.
Any further discussion? You.
Just, um, just that I. I hope that, I mean, in the spirit of compromise, and then the fact that it's four points down from what the first referendum was. I hope that, I mean, in the spirit of compromise, and then the fact that it's four points down from what the first referendum was. Really hope that this board will support it as fully as they possibly can. I think it's a, a huge leap. From where we were. I think it's, I think we have heard everyone, there, there have been, I know, I know that there. You know, that there are views about what some people have said, but you know, I'm thinking. This increases in, you know, Bullock Land, and as he pointed out, he's a former selectman and a former board of finance chair. I know, I know that that's. I know that that's one individual who said that, but you know, I remember at the, at the town meeting. Or the, I'm sorry, the budget hearing, there were, there were, there was someone else who. Who was, had done financial work for them, for the town before, who was talking about four percent. I mean, I feel like. There are a lot of factors here, but it, it, I just, I just really hope that we think about. What we want our town to be, what we want to sustain in our town, what, what we want it to be tomorrow as well as today. And. Um, I fully believe that there should be some kind of tax relief, but I don't think we can do it all in the budget.
It's a point of order, I, you guys. Could have, you can't add today's agenda because it's a special meeting. But we're gonna have to add, have you guys ask for a selectmen for a call to town meeting? So, you're gonna have to have another. Special meeting soon to, to tend it, the board selection for a call.
I think we have to next week. Yeah, or at least one, I don't know.
Yeah, we have a meeting on the twenty-ninth, on the thirtieth.
Go ahead with that. We just have. Yeah, we kind of those, the budget calendar is set up so there's only one event for like seven meetings, so one action, so it's like. It would be kind of useful to put in on this one.
It can be added to the agenda for our next meeting.
Yeah, maybe we could do one sooner than what the calendar says, rather than, because I think it waits. It's, when is the next?
Yeah, we still have to.
That's a week, though.
No, I don't have.
Y'all have to call down the education. Oh, sorry. Is there further discussion on it?
Yeah, is there any further discussion? Nope, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay, any abstentions? Nope, there we go.
You missed.
No.
No.
No, I missed it.
I was the no.
Thank you.
Now, to the motion, it will be made to send it to board of selectmen.
Special meeting.
Can't add an agenda item to a special meetings agenda. No, the experts say no. But I, I know, it's frustrating. It is frustrating. Can I just? Mention something for clarity's sake? Um, I just wanna clarify the. Poverty rate thing in town. Because I consulted, and she's a town resident, but he's also a really longtime data analyst for the state of Connecticut. Orlando Rodriguez. And. So I asked him, what is really our poverty rate? Cause people say all kinds of things, and I've heard several claims about ours being the highest in the towns around us. It is not. Storrs is forty-two percent because of its student base, Mansfield at large is twenty-two percent. We're at thirteen point seven, but it has a plus or five, plus or minus five point four factor. Because we're tiny and our sample is not scientific. So, that could range, you know, anywhere from. Eight point three on the low end, or nine, nineteen point, you know, one percent on the high end. But the, the extremes are. You know, whatever, you know, end of the, of the thirteen point seven. And there's a high margin of error that's typical for towns like ours. The UConn students may be disproportionately contributing to the poverty rate, and we do have a lot of them here. A lot of them are, that, as you saw, the apartment, the apartment growth is, has doubled. Uh, so, the poverty rate is, is based on a sample of the population, not all individuals. So you don't necessarily know that. In fact, they may be interviewing the owner of the facility, the apartment facility. And not the, whatever, forty students living there or whatever. So. If the owner lives in Wellington, that's, that's the way it's counted. So, however, the low income. Apartment dwellers account for, you know, multiple people. And college students in general can really, especially around UConn, which. Of course, is its own large city in our part of the state, can really distort a small town's income profile. So I just wanna clarify that because, yeah, it's thirteen point seven, but that it may be. Closer to the state's ten percent, depending on what, what ends up happening in the margin.
Yeah, you said there was a plus or minus factor there.
That's what I just said. It could be something else, you know, I mean, I'm just saying, it's not reliable and I've never, and I haven't seen. No, I think it is clear.
Can I just add to that for a second?
Yeah.
Come by here on a Wednesday or Thursday, great for the chair, and watch the line going wrong.
No, I'm not, I'm not. Thirteen seven point seven is a serious number. Thirteen point seven is a serious number. I'm not saying anything about that. I'm just saying. You know, it's not the largest of the towns around us, so.
Alright, present to speak. Public participation is deserved and encouraged. Speakers will be limited to time and appropriateness of comments to maintain progress beyond topic and maintain the forum. Maybe there are screeners.
Yeah.
Zoom two at Wellington, you can go first.
Hi, it's John Tien, twenty-six Eldridge Mills Road. Um, I'd, I'd like to ask all the members of the board, um, do any of you have retirement savings accounts? And if yes, why haven't you spent all the money in them? According to the chairman of this board, you're losing money. Um, so it doesn't make sense that anyone should save any money ever, or, or so it would seem. Thank you.
Anybody else up there? Nope, anybody inside?
I haven't said much of the resident during this whole process. I was here in the beginning during the first one. And doing my quick for the board event. But I'm noticing a lot of things where everyone gets tied up in dollars. It's not a comment that the, we should eliminate the. Uh, red department because it costs a hundred and fifty-two thousand, which I could be wrong. And it only brings in thirty thousand dollars. Yeah, that may be true, except for the fact that the red department gives the kids in town, especially when James is in charge, taking charge of that. Gives the kids in town much more than they had before. I was basketball coach because he brought that back to the red department. So it's not just about the actual dollars, it's about what those dollars translate to. Um, and that brings me to the. Savings for the, for the schools. Three million now. As Pete pointed out, in year two, it got cut, but it was jacked up. And I'm gonna point out that it wasn't brought up. And now it's jacked back down and we're back to three. What I worry about is two out of these three years, it's been cut. You're already setting a precedent that that's something to hit easily. We go into year four, it's only gonna be a million. You try to take money from it then, then you're gonna be under what was agreed upon by the board of finance. I'm really worried about that because it's happened these past two years. I foresee it happening again. The other thing I wanna point out actually just happened with what Steph gave for statistics. And because the plus or minus was so high because of the sample size. He was laughed like he was useless. And I find that funny that it was laughed like he was useless because. You're using a random vote that failed to determine. What percentage the people in this town would be acceptable to. And you absolutely cannot do that. You have one data point from that referendum, and that is, they didn't like the number that was printed into it. It is statistically just as likely that everybody who voted no, thought the budget was too low. As it is thinking the budget was too high because you have no other data point to go on. You have people that you talk to, that's fine. But you, based on that question alone, based on that referendum alone, you have. No idea what is palatable for a percentage. And like I said, people could have thought it was too low. It's, it's the exact same statistical average. And while Steph's number, Steph's swing number was very high, it's kinda how it works with statistics, especially using a small sample size. So, while everyone was kinda snickering how far this, I find this found that funny the entire time we talked about the failed referendum. And using the failure as a point to say, well, the people want this number. You don't know that. They just didn't want the number they had before. Last year, the referendum failed, you came back. Cut a different number, it was lower, that one passed. Based on the history. That's all you have for evidence. History says a cut in this would pass it again, just based on the history that we have. That's the only other piece of data you have. Just wanted, want you to think about that. Thank you.
Thanks, Arthur. Um, Lori, separate one.
Hi. I just would like to say I appreciate the work that you folks are all putting in. I know it takes a lot of time and effort to, you know, go through all these numbers. I hope that in spite of the fact that some of you don't agree that this, you think this budget should have been even lower. I hope you will not actively campaign against it. We need to have a budget, we need to get this passed. And I, we need to let the voters. Have their say. It's up to the voters. And Bruce, for you to assume that they're gonna vote it down because it's not what you think it should be. Uh, you know, I think you have to consider that this board has been thoughtful and, and we need to move forward and. And, uh, we need to encourage people to vote, but I just hope that, that. There are not board members actively campaigning against this budget now that we've gotten to this point. Thank you.
Thank you, Lori. We have anybody else for present to speak? James Marshall?
Hi, everybody, can you hear me okay?
Yeah.
Yes.
Beautiful. James Marshall Fisher, I also serve as chair of the CIP committee. Um, and previously I was on the board of finance for a year. Like, I, I appreciate the efforts. To actively evaluate the budget and look for specific line items. But long story short, reality of what just happened tonight was you, you. Spending by. You hit increases in spending by reducing savings to capital reserve. It is the complete opposite of any reasonable potential plans. Uh, to address the long-term means of the town. You didn't actually address spending in any way, shape or form, but you did hide. More significant budgetary increases by reducing capital reserve for the second year in a row. And make no mistake, this is a very dramatic decrease. In the transfer to capital reserve as a percentage. And should this budget fail. Capital reserve is actually gonna look much more favorable. Um, and all of your savings here are gonna hit the operating side. And that is gonna be a hard not to overcome. Because we can't keep hiding. Behind capital reserve is the easy scapegoat. I don't know how many more people should say it, how much more time. Can be spent trying to come up with a long-term effective plan or strategy for addressing the needs. But the reality is, is stated here tonight. The capital reserve funding is. Dramatically underfunded for the needs ahead of the town, whether it's a five million dollar fire station or fifteen million dollar fire station. And that's not my number. As it was, you know, I was called out quite a lot tonight, some favorable, some not, but that is not my number. That is the number submitted by the fire departments to CIP. CIP does not create numbers. CIP reacts to submissions and potential projects submitted by the various departments of town. Right now, that operating number is fifteen million. Do I hope that comes down? Actually, yes, I do personally. But the CIP committee can only react, react to what's on the table. And right now, a fifteen million dollar project for the fire departments is on the table. What we need to do as a community is start to really evaluate what. We want to be, where we wanna go, and what we wanna invest in. And if we're not going to make the investment. In building up capital reserves so that we can address some of these significant needs that are not going away. Then we're all wasting our time. And we need to be honest with the community that we're gonna cut fire services in town. Or we're gonna wind up having increases in taxes for the next twenty years, trying to maintain two hundred year old school buildings. That's the reality where we're at. If we don't start planning for it now and aggressively, we're never gonna get anywhere. Um, and you keep. Year after year, one side of this committee, one side of this board, one side of the parties in town. Continues to be regressive instead of proactive, and it is the wrong thing to do. So I'm glad you guys got down, the number down tonight. Either way, I wish you had taken a hard look at some spending. And not had it all be burdened on savings to capital reserve, cause. Quite frankly, we're just gonna be here doing the same conversation next year, and it's gonna be even harder for all. Um, and the year after that as well. And don't even get me started where we're gonna be three years from now, because that's when we start to really see some significant hits. And you guys are setting us up to fail on all of it. So, again, I hope we can have preact, proactive discussions to actually advance the needle on this. It will involve spending significantly more. That's the reality of where we're at, because we've had no effort, we've had no capital reserve for twenty years. Thank you.
Thanks, James. Anybody else for present to speak?
Thanks, Alomardo Road, uh, Wellington. Uh, I first wanna say, I appreciate Christina. Uh, heading a lot of the numbers tonight, uh, kinda pointing that. I think you did a great job, so. I can give compliments sometimes. I appreciate also Bruce, how, how you've been conducting the meetings. Steph, I, I don't understand your problem with people trying to follow along, you saying, oh. Why is that? People are trying to find out. Donna didn't even know the numbers. So I, I don't, I don't understand your problem with that, but it is what it is. It's been notated. Anyway, so to say you don't know, uh, why it failed, uh, by board members, board of education. Uh, board of finance, it just tells me that these, these members have no finger on the pulse of the town. They're completely clueless of what's going on in the town. Uh, and that's unfortunate. Uh, tonight, the town made drastic. Cuts, I'm sure Peter's not happy, but, uh. Board, board of education faced really nothing, other than the CIP, I get it, and I'm not a fan of how, uh, we're going after the capital. I'm actually kind of on, uh, some people I mostly don't agree, but I kinda agree with them on reserve. But board of education from an operational standpoint faced really no meaningful operational costs. The only people that really maybe got, uh, beat up outside of CIP was the fire department. Um, and I hope that we keep that in mind in the future, um, of what they've done. Uh, in, in regards to the poverty rate, it was funny because it was comparing to college areas, uh, which I found hysterical. Um, Talon just deep, um, voted down twice now. And their impact to how much a homeowner was gonna face was about four hundred dollars. Um, more a year, and they just voted that down. With the proposed numbers that I'm seeing right now, we're looking at probably four hundred dollars. So, it'll be interesting to keep that in mind and see where the vote goes. Let's see here. You know, again, tonight, and I knew this was gonna happen, um, that some board members only listen to the voices in, in the room. Or on Zoom, and they ignore the people that are outside of this room. Um, you know, there was forty-six people outside of this room that wanted. A three percent or below, and some of the board members here just ignore them, so. Thank you.
Thanks, Nick. We have anybody else for present to speak? It's talking about his Facebook poll. Any good ones?
Sorry, Bruce, if you don't, do you mind? Um, sorry, this is James Marshall again. I just also, I, I meant to say before, but I wanna say I appreciate the fire departments and being proactive and looking for reductions. And understanding. The potential costs of capital reserve savings for potential projects. Um, they've been very proactive throughout the season. In accommodating, uh, the request of the CIP committee and working to. Come to a good. Forward direction, um, under the new. forward direction um under the new emergency services facilities building committee. So I just, I I think everybody here should um give them appreciation uh for the work that they're doing, for the efforts they're trying to do to advance this successful project on behalf of the town. So thank you.
Thank you, James. So can we have a motion to adjourn?
I just want, I I hope to keep this brief because I wanna go home. I I've heard a lot of people say, I hope said, nobody goes out and says no. I, as much as I would like to see this budget pass so we can get past this and I can start doing things for the town. I I do not like the the people saying, don't go out and 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 speak your mind. Absolutely go out and speak your mind. And I would hope that those people that wanna see this pass, go out and speak their mind. That the more speech is the only only solution. It is never the suppression of speech.
Thank you. Thank you, Pete. Do we have a motion to adjourn? Please. You have a hand on screen. Yes, Adam, thank you.
All right, I'll, I'll be, um, just, just looking at the initial budget that was proposed and is a taxpayer. I seen that, I I thought that, um, well, what are we getting for money? No one really, there wasn't any good marketing, at least I felt as as a voter, my wife as well, that I think if we wanna have better engagement from the voters, um, we need to be better with our marketing on what we're getting from the budget. And I'm not sure how we do that, but I think um I think that will help with getting our budget passed in the first round. That's all. So, thank you.
Thank you, Adam. Do we have anybody else for present to speak? Nope, can we have a motion to adjourn this evening? So make a motion adjourn. Sexy like it. All those in favor say aye.